Council for review and discussion of the public safety and emergency emergency services budgets. Uh so uh it's me, Michael Morrow and Trudy Tino here, town council. Uh so again, thanks for showing up tonight. We appreciate it. Part of our uh normal routine process here. Appreciate everyone coming together on a very short notice as we ramp up pretty quickly. Um so with that said, uh does anyone wanna kinda kick off? You tell me how you guys wanna do it. I'm happy to accommodate whatever schedules please. Do you wanna go for it, Chief?
Sure, yeah.
And you just have to click. I apologize for what I mean copies of this. Who is sending to who would be attending, but uh I can send copies after me tonight. So we've prepared this, obviously with this chief call cast before retirement. He began the process and Chief Walsh and I picked up where he left off. Thought about it deliberately and then very carefully and looked at it and refined it and continue to refine it. Uh even to this day, we're still looking at things and uh looking for anywhere to be some cost saving. We picked up a couple things today. So I think we have a pretty neat budget. Um starting right into what we're going to in control. And most people kind of animal controls just all licenses, but we went more than that. I had numerous bear sighting podcasts. Other kinds of wildlife. We assist other agencies. It's very unique community. We've gone in there and helped us out a lot with coverage and room as well and do some community education as well.
I'm just curious, how community education in that?
Uh coyote, the vaping, those sorts of things to try to, there's a lot of people get concerned with their household pets. With other wildlife coming on the property and uh and raise education. Um so if it comes out. The the most recent one that's been bear sightings up in the northeast section of town, so kinda educating those areas and those people what to do, they should do to not attract bears and what you're for.
Okay, what kind of bears it makes? No, it's bigger than any other bear.
They're big and they're they're not pets and they're not cute, but uh So uh our animal control officer, Officer Collins, she's gonna be retiring this year. She wasn't retired at the end of last year, but she had that on hold for several reasons, so she's uh she's retiring this year at some point. And with that, uh like I said, we recognize some areas, save some costs on on her salary. The uh we do basically it's gonna have a little bit less responsibilities. Years past, our animal control officer carried a firearm, which we thought was was inappropriate at this stage. It just required more training on our part and more responsibility on theirs. So we're gonna take over that responsibility if an animal we see euthanized or an officer, this this training department is gonna handle that. So we took that off the plate and and for whatever reason, years past, that position was considered department head, which was pretty much inappropriate. We discussed it with Cheryl, Human Resources, and we decided to make that just fold it into our police department uh structure, which it already was, and she wasn't, she wasn't in the department, and she was department one, so it was kinda silly to make that an department head position. So we're gonna reduce that salary appropriately, so.
Chief, does it does it um Does this still require firearm certification? We require that, maybe it doesn't need it and it could be cheaper.
Well, that's that's what we did. We're we're we've eliminated that requirement.
We require them altogether, so.
Yeah, 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 we eliminated that requirement because it's unnecessary and it wasn't, really wasn't suitable for the position that
We seem to produce the, so so ninety-five, it's actually less than.
This lesson was. And the uh capital base is ten thousand dollar fence. Uh to for the Canadian vet, that's gonna be our C shelter. If we, the bar fell, it goes down. Typically, when years pass, when it gets really cold for a certain period of time, our shelter can't be properly. It's just an old building and it really needs to be demolished, but.
Wait, so that issue's still going on?
Yeah, in last year. It it it's okay, like in this type of weather, it's fine, but when it gets really, really cold, it just, it's it the the heating system can't keep up with that that room and um it it's down at the transfer station, if you know where the recent uh swap shop is. Kind of on the opposite side of that salt bin in there and it's, I think it was the old transfer compactor or something. Buildings that that is is really, really outdated and it's uh it's suitable ninety percent of the time. But on occasion, things go down, uh the power goes out or the water issues arise or or it gets too too cold in there. For whatever reason, if it does go down, we wanna have emergency backup, we wanna be able to take care of the animals that we do have uh in process. So we we recently agreed with the Canadian vet clinic. And uh the only requirement is that we need to have an indoor ten foot fence penalty area that we can exercise in, that's a safe requirement, so that's what that capital budget ask is is for. The Canadian vet company didn't have that, so to bring that up to the code, that's present for that this year.
Yeah, you know, I actually had discussions with uh Tiger last year about this particular pop up. And I thought there was, I wish I had more discussion, but I think there was maybe, there could be an accommodation for both DVW and the police that structure um basically do like a free uh a prefab on that lab and then heat it with the right way and then that becomes useful much more than it is to DVW, but then also be, you know, more quote unquote humane for these uh.
Right, yeah, yeah, I think I think that's entire year's future ask. I don't believe it's for this year, but it might be. It is forthcoming budget asks to uh to demo that building and trying to get rid of it and rebuild it. Maybe for better for use for that area.
Right, okay, great, yeah, we're sure.
I mean, the police department. Just a few highlights, um because not everybody knows what we actually do. We did have over fourteen thousand calls for service. Three hundred and ninety-six of those were school checks. We we ramped that up this year with our additional SRO. We have numerous fraud calls that seem to be an everyday occurrence where people are getting checks on in the mailboxes or identity thefts. We're taking on those sorts of calls. Family disputes are ever present, which is is good and bad. Uh it's it's good in the sense that they're being reported where in years past um they didn't work. Um so we don't like to see that recorded. We do like to see them recorded, but people feel comfortable enough to call us when they're having issues at home. Something that I think has definitely helped that in in recent years is the elimination of dual arrests. Way back when, when I first started, if you get called through domestic, it was sort of a team that you would arrest both parties, they would put it in court and work it out. Um and that, you know, obviously would lead to a lot of people not wanting to call, they didn't wanna get arrested. And so we have much more thorough screenings that the officers do on scene, evaluate your settlements and whatnot and try to um identify who the aggressor in the situation is and make appropriate arrests based on those data information, so. You know, we're getting much better at that. You see, we do lots of medical responses, almost fifteen hundred are uh long periods, core assistance, motor vehicle violations, and our responses are still high.
So that the ambulance is different from from your vet, these vet nurses, right?
Yeah, no, so anytime there's a medical call, we're first responders, so we're obligated to go with all medical calls that they want. So before the humans get there, our answer is.
See, I had an chance, I spoke to Alvea, Fire Department, they're also called on some of these.
Yeah, so.
So you can respond.
Sometimes Fire Department will say, well, they'll go on all accidents with injuries. Usually, the Fire Department will respond to those medical calls, the Fire Department will call, we'll assist them if we're shorthanded or we're on a lot of times with multiple medical calls and we don't have staff to respond to some calls, so Fire Department will step in because they're all medically trained, so they can set in, but they're not classified as first responders, so they don't have to go to all medical calls. They'll just go to the calls where we request their assistance on, let the system, we need help, there's some down there, and we get everybody's help, so that.
The reason that seems because we have a street where there's a couple of books and they have slots or whatever, and it just think like there's always like a ton of people coming, the ambulance, the fire, like it's literally a big party, and I just wonder if that's, and I know this by the way, the same thing happened around in California too, like it's everyone comes and I just never really, and it's worse than the act of my understanding. I'm not getting why everyone needs to come all the time.
It's usually you'll see an ambulance respond, the paramedic comes and does the vehicle. And usually at least one officer, possibly two, depending on what it is, if we, if it's true medical emergency, CPR, ventilator, we wanna have as many hands on deck as possible, as quickly as possible. So it's not uncommon to see four vehicles respond to what you might think is just a routine medical call, but we don't know it's routine usually until we get there and we give value first. And we try, we we rather have more people there than.
Yeah, actually, yeah, it's just, and and I mean, like I said, I don't, maybe more so understanding, it's it's a thing by the way, by having all those people. And and so I I just don't get it, like I'm not quite um
If I can answer for you.
Yes.
They're not, there is a requirement to have a first responder there, so I bet the police are getting there um well before the ambulance gets there, so that's one thing. So their response time has to count that first responder, which is PD, so they have to get their first kind of help out uh for time, but like Chief said, just having those, if it's CPR call, two people, the third person's not gonna be enough. For the level of care that they have to give with, you know, initially with their DPD and CPR and then the medic doing their things. So that fourth and fifth person become real important.
These kind of fits like just.
I mean, they have whatever, they have first responder has priority, is required to go everything under the state.
Some more highlights, uh Community Impact Officer, this is just a continued staff that Officer is dedicated to the downtown area and focuses on businesses and then the business district and anything that happens, community related. Uh we've also added a school resource officer. Um Shane Gibson, who is dedicated to the elementary schools, his primary focus is to focus on the three elementary schools. In addition, some of the private schools, this is that, but primarily are three elementary schools.
Have they assisted in that right as well?
Yeah, yeah, so easily, he's he was the liaison with saying who's prior to him taking on this role, so he's already has uh established relationship with there and um so he he does contact them and stop paying a check on them once in a while. But his his primary focus is that ninety percent of his time is spent on the public schools, public elementary schools and on between west, south, and east school. Um and I can tell you, the the response from the administrative staff of all this, the elementary schools have been phenomenal now. They love it, they love having it and I think we go to the uh the academy, the crisis buyer report meetings, and you just see the the relief on the faces of of the administrators and the and the teachers in those those schools just to have a security presence and know that there there there's somebody there that's looking out for security. Obviously, they have monitors and they have great monitors, but having Shane there, he's really paid on that role very seriously. And provided a high level of of security and a high level of loyalty to those schools.
Have they uh created a desire to have a dedicated one?
Yeah, yeah, so members of the board that approach me on that, now we've taken Shane off of the ship, so I have lost him or control shift and I I I told the people, I told them, I need to hire more officers if they want to have dedicated full-time SROs at the elementary schools. I can't do forty-seven, the forty-seven this morning that I got right now. I'm already stretched thin, as you can see with with the um community impact officers, we have two SROs now with a bear SRO. Um it is just, who would need to hire another officer to dedicate to that that role?
So you would need maybe basically you have to have almost like a a mini department for SRO, really?
It it, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
It's getting to that point, yeah. What would be ideal for me employing on public safety, security standpoint, uh a head count for a unit like that, or the whole school system here?
Well, you know, we want one in every school, you know, you're talking, there's five right there and you could maybe even make an argument that you would need another one. You know, if if money was more limited, you know, with the amount of activity that the SROs at the middle school and high school are involved with. How is it even the middle school? Because that population is is huge. And that age, they're just dealing so much stuff, right, so much crazy stuff with with the vaping and the social media and just growing up in that weird age of becoming a teenager.
I agree, that that's the most problematic.
You know, yeah, the most vulnerable, you know, and it's, and you have to watch that, you know, this rate, eight rate, you have just you know, such a diverse population there. Um so, you know, like if money were more objects, you know, that would be the ideal. If we could ever get there, I can I'll I'm gonna say I haven't hired one.
I think they also, so I have the answers all just please for those issues. I mean, I think they're all not just the vaping and the social media, the other resources that they can use.
Sure.
And I think they are like the Kian Care stuff, and they also have that other, they have that new accomplishment sort of person that also supposed to be doing that, so I think we I think that, I think you're right. I think the issues are diverse and it's a very vulnerable population, but I think they're maybe dealing with it in different ways.
They they they're all combined, so what, you know, and that's the beauty of the SROs. And the difference of the SRO that sat in high school, they're immersed in that population and they work so well with the counselors and social workers. Like the Kian Care did that the other night on vaping and Chazie was there presenting.
Right.
Their partners from the Kian Care, so yeah, in that role, they're they're much more immersed in that culture in the middle school and the high school, whereas the SROs at the elementary schools, you're not having that high level of of involvement with the kids, you're providing more security service and kind of monitoring that and monitoring who's coming in and out and so that that's the approach that we're using now with Shane as our elementary SRO. His focus is more security related and and focusing on those areas rather than immersing in that, you know, gives.
I think it's an example of the um Officer Dean, that little leadership um leadership class or some sort of thing, I think my son was in it, and I thought it was really great, and because beyond just, you're getting to them, it's you're trying to um create a relationship that definitely.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, without, I mean, when we move past this particular achievement, it's kind of scope of the budget, but I was just interested on your thoughts about what how the PD would do it, you know, and I know school security is kind of the biggest issue now with
Yeah.
Chiefly on uh, formerly on over there and I think a broader discussion needs to be had and, you know, whether this, you know, PD should bring the cost of of that forward and I don't know if that that makes too much logical sense, but I think the discussion is uh
Yeah.
I can just go back for a second to the community impact roles and just, what is the uh shift that was for that position?
So I I've given her a lot of latitude in that role. Um typically, we want her to have presence when businesses are open, so, you know, and you're working, you know, coming in at five AM, oh, business are closed or standing till midnight, you know, but uh that's that's kind of the guidelines is is to focus on when the businesses are open. Typically, she works eight to four, nine to five in that area.
Yeah.
Um and a lot of times, you know, be here on Tuesday or on the weekend, when there's when there's evening events or when there's uh food drives or um sidewalk sales, those sorts of things, anything, the farmer's markets, they're involved. So they're they're involved in anything community related, so they they have a little bit more flexibility with their shift to accommodate all those strange things, so if there's something going on the weekend, she can shift her hours to to work on the weekend, so it try to give her some flexibility in that role.
Okay.
Because it's community related, so it's gotta be, she's gotta be available whenever the community needs her, yeah. And the good thing is we're continuing to hire, we hired five new officers, um pre-graduated levels, two Rattle trainers, we have one graduated academy on Friday night and starting this week, and one of the Lamas is also starting this week to uh to get out of field training. Uh one officer in the academy. And we have two seats for future vacancies, anticipated vacancies this summer. We have two seats at the April uh this academy, so we're we're staying ahead of the curve.
Are you increasing the number of offices or is it staying the same?
So we know we're gonna have two retirements this summer, so we're hiring ahead. So technically speaking, we'll be two plus in April for a short period of time. But we won't see those officers on the road for many, many months until we go through their appropriate training, so they are on staff, they are on payroll, but we won't see them on the road for many months after those retirements occur, right? So, but it is a lot of us can get a couple months ahead of the third one passed. We would have two retirements, we will then advertise for the position and we start over and it would be nearly a year before we could actually put those vacancies, so somebody out there. Uh going back real quick, uh the K nine uh program is 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 up and running again, that was uh something that was kind of on hiatus for a couple of years. Uh Officer Bono is doing great. With Apollo now, he's been out for a couple of months now. He's bringing in officers, he's thriving in that role. He's enjoying every minute of it and he's getting followed out there quite frequently.
Should you tell us about Apollo?
So Apollo is uh then he's seven years old, I think, so he, you know, when he so when he went through his his little setback a couple of years ago with his previous uh handler, um we had to kind of put Apollo into some uh care of another uh K nine trainer for for a while until we got this all sorted out. Um but we've identified through them, through our through our training council with with the other K nine experts, that Apollo did have some useful life left in him. And they recommended that we retrain an officer to take over Apollo for his remaining years. And you know, the good thing is, you know, the K nine is is probably a little bit lower activity, so we'll probably get at least two or three more years out of Apollo. He's not running through, you know, like deep factories or doing building surface things, but the we're out of uh sooner in in some larger agencies. Um but just in the short time that Apollo's been backed out, he's assisted on some searches. Um recently, in both in town and assisted other agencies in in Norwalk, if he's working in Norwalk, doesn't have one or another agency, doesn't have K nine working. We're having mutual mutual agreements, we'll go across town and now outside town to assist. Um and he's uh he's working.
Well, Chief, you know, this is an issue that someone was getting discussing about, and because this is now a public meeting. Can you just address how it is that Apollo's cared for in terms of where the points come from and?
So, yeah, so the K nine program I started out and has been run since its inception through donation, that was Chief Leon's um uh way of bringing this, the the whole program alive, and I'm not really sure you know, why, maybe at the time it wasn't an appetite to fund it through um through our budget. Um so that's why you see recently that we, because Apollo is is back out on the road again and we have uh all kinds of expenses from the decision that the officer gets to feeding the K nine to vet appointments, all sorts of things that, just all things that that it's equipment for vehicles, we've identified a new vehicle, as you can see in that picture there, that's a very old Crown Vic that the dog is still using. Um very outdated, we have a car, but it's it's very outdated, so we've identified a a new old car of ours that's that's got about forty thousand miles, so we're gonna equip with new K nine equipment and give them an updated vehicle. Um so all those things that that cost to run the the K nine program are handled through that donation account. Um I've done a little bit of uh history on that account and it seems to be roughly fifteen to twenty thousand dollars annually that of course associated with running the K nine program. And I would be happy to roll that over into our our budget, if not this year, next year, we can certainly do that. Uh I think we have enough in our donation accounts to run a program successfully for another year and get the vehicle equipped. If we're comfortable with that, so if we wanna put it off to next year to to roll that twenty thousand or so into a line item budget, we can do that, or with your guidance, if you'd like us to to do that this year, we could certainly do that as well.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's really constructive itself, but it's a view, my view, with you and many colleagues that I've spoken to, that we're pretty stunned when we found out that this was a program that's just being funded through donations, that is providing real benefit to the town for, you know, law enforcement purposes, so I mean, I know myself and many others would support this type of, you know, expenditure in the PD budget to make sure that, you know, Apollo and his successors uh will be, you know, taking care of and part of the annual budget process, so I think we wanna have some discussions, you know, on fairly short order.
Yeah, no, I saw someone brought this to me and said, why are we for donations for this? And so I I, yeah, I was sort of like, wow, that's odd.
Yeah, yeah, it's how the program started and I'm not really sure.
And so I think it goes to me that I should be paying for. Can you just tell me, just so I, I look on the side of, you know, um, can you just tell me what Apollo, like what his uses, what he does and how how you're utilizing?
So he he has multiple roles. Um he can do narcotics and drug sniffing, so, you know, the other day we had motor vehicle stop, there was some suspicion of narcotics activity based on officers' investigations, so the dog came to the scene and did a clear sniff of the vehicle, meaning it didn't need a search, didn't need permission, wasn't intruding into the passenger compartment of the vehicle. Just walked around the exterior of the vehicle to see if it hit on any uh drugs that it's trained to hit on, not just marijuana, but other other drugs. Um and turns out, dog didn't get on anything at that time, um so it does have that capability. It also does have the capability to do tracking. Uh not long ago, um person in town suffered a psychiatric incident and was out in the late hours of night, it was cold rain night, we were searching for the person and K nine assisted in that search. And we actually had a state police meeting with their dog, and that's kind of how this this system works too, is they're a close close network. And they can call on their agencies and other K nine handlers to assist. Followed searching this for a few hours, we asked for another dog to assist and we actually found a woman. Um and, you know, she was she was in critical situation where, you know, she was stayed out of it, she probably suffered some severe medical emergency from hypothermia, and um so that typically what we'll see the use for the K nine is is surgeon narcotics related. Now, obviously with the legality of legalization of marijuana, that changes it a little bit, but still uh you can't use marijuana in your car, so there's obviously restrictions in um marijuana issues, so he, Officer Bono's well trained and up to date on the current laws, on the current K nine laws, so that's typically how we're gonna use.
Well, I'm just wondering, Chief, because of other surrounding, I want to hear you share. Um if you're not using them all the time, and maybe Darian and Wilson, whatever, may have a need to maybe share costs or something, I don't know, I don't know if that's even viable.
I I I think other agencies have their dogs, we do share. But if if their dogs aren't available and aren't working, and our dog is working, we'll go and.
So they all, so Darian and both, both have dogs.
Uh, I, I think, I, I can't answer correctly for Darian, like, like I know North Walk does, but sometimes obviously they're not working every shift.
Right.
And if our, if Apollo's working and they don't have any dogs on, they'll call in the area, is there any dog working? And our team would respond and assist, so. I don't know if we can share costs, but we certainly share usage and overlap usage.
Yeah, I was just wondering how much cost do you use in a, like, K nine alone?
I just could say the same for all. But the meaning is there. So, well, that's uh, I appreciate that.
For next year, so, oh, including this year or waiting to next year?
I mean, I'm in favor of this year, I, I don't, you know, I, I, I.
Do we get back to donations, though, how does that work?
Uh, that's a good question. I mean, we could, we do have expenses that we don't need to, so we, we could utilize and whatever doesn't get covered by our. A- addition to our budget, we could utilize that and, you know, utilize that first and take care of that. The donation count zero that out and then start using.
Yeah, so I'm thinking like zero it out and then start then, right? What we do with that money and they, they donated it for this purpose, so. But he's saying there's enough to cover that, we don't need to add anymore.
To fit out and also for cost for just his care itself?
Uh, yeah, I think we can cover that this year.
Donations.
Yeah, that's the donation commitment and what's currently in there, what's been committed to. I think we'll be fine for this year, I think we're comfortable where we're at, so we can start next year.
There's momentum right now for it, that's why, you know, we're all talking about it, for it to sit for another year, um, and then revisit it when this is just something.
But at least it's been uh, 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 introduced this year.
Right, plus, I mean, you'll have to know whether you need to, you know, get your hat out and ask for money again next year. You really know, like, for planning purposes for next year's care costs, like, you're not gonna know, well, maybe in our budget, you know, so. I think we should just move forward with that trial, I mean, what we see can.
You know, a partial, we can say twenty thousand this year, be ten thousand, just to get that line out and established with the, with the, you know, it's. Not increasing it next year, so that was. Yeah. You should really make a push for that with compliance. Moving into capital, um, as always a big ask for us is our vehicle expenses. Um, large portion of our capital request this year is for six vehicles. Um, that's typically more than we ask for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and there's, there's reasons behind that and get that in some upcoming slides, but um. We, we've actually been asked by the highway department to eliminate some of our older fleet. Because the repair costs are becoming so demanding on, on both courts department, highway department. One, getting the parts and two, the cost of the parts and the cost of the, the repairs is becoming so high. That they're asking us to get rid of some of our high mileage fleet vehicles and kind of reset the fleet. Last year we asked for three vehicles in the time that we got the budget approved. For increase the cost per vehicle by eight thousand, by over eight thousand dollars, so we only get two. Funded that we had allocated, so we're even further behind last year with our, with our fleet improvements. Um, other items on there are kind of typical from year to year, case replacements, moved out of terminals or both. Both with vests replacements. The thing at the bottom there is a, a backup battery system for dispatch center. So large, you know, it's one of those, you can think of it as UPS to, you know, where she powers supply. On steroids, it's a big deal that, that every, um, eighty, ten years needs to replace batteries because they just wear out. Uh, so that's a, that's about an eight thousand dollar ask for that.
Just the, the vehicles. About with the vehicles, so uh, how much, eventually the whole fleet, there's, should that, that must be replaced because.
Yeah, so I'll get to uh, so um, moving more on our, our vehicles, so um. Our requirement is identify eight or frontline vehicle that's, that's just need to be replaced. Um, very long lead times, since we get the vehicles, very long time to get the vehicles to go down, fixed. Currently, we have two vehicles that have been out of service down at the highway department since.
September.
Since September, so they've been off the road, out of our fleet, those are frontline primary used vehicles. Um, what happened was the mortar nuts broke and crushed some, so cooling lines. And we just can't get parts, we can't get those vehicles back out on the road and they're just sitting out at the highway department. So.
Isn't that because like the, you know, the whole supply chain thing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that gonna improve with time or that is?
You don't know, no answers, you don't know, we, we getting no good answers from anybody. And, and we're trying, the highway department's trying, they're calling in all area, um, dealerships. And nobody is supplying and, and nobody's giving any answers, even, even those for emergency vehicle, it's just.
I represent a lot of car dealerships in New Connecticut, New York, and they cannot get. And people holding on to their vehicle even longer now because it's so expensive to purchase something new or used.
Right.
Everyone is just keeping their cars, there's less money, you know.
Right, so more repairs and more. Yeah.
Offload the vehicle, so it's a real problem.
Yeah. So you can see, um, last year we were authorized, that's free over, only able to purchase two. So what we're proposing is this year, six to catch up and stabilize our fleet. Um, and then go to a four, three, four, three cycle of, of replacement and that should stabilize us.
Are you going with that?
No, it's not suitable for emergency response vehicle, we just need to be able to.
Pick up and go.
Pick up and go and go for a long period of time, we never know, it could be at, at an accident, some hours. And, you know, we can't have that vehicle battery die and then.
I get it.
Refueling it, we don't have half an hour to wait for it to.
No, I, I, I get it, I was a little concerned, you're going to say yes.
No. Some of our neighboring towns do it, but I think that's more.
Well, unless, unless you can like, in a, a, a small town, but you know, certain vehicles are for things that you aren't as emergency, so you can.
So, so I, I believe on the town side, they're doing that more, um, for vehicles that can sit and be chartered overnight. They have more of a predictable use, um, it's, it's hard for us because we don't have that predicted use. Even, even my vehicle, what you think is just an admin vehicle, I could have to go to the scene and have to stay there for hours. And not, and not relying on my vehicle, so right now it's just not suitable for, for the emergency response vehicles. This is like, you've probably seen before comparing us to neighboring towns and what their replacement cycles.
Right.
Um, as you well know, our vehicles are, are twenty-four seven or choose response vehicles. Their essential emergency equipment. Um, one key thing to understand is, is that as our fleet ages, we. We have different usages for them, obviously brand new vehicles, we'll go to our frontline patrol fleet. As those vehicles age out, we can move those to a secondary administrative role, we can use them for training. We can use them for other assignments that aren't as mission critical and don't get that high usage. So when that vehicle hits sixty, seventy thousand miles, we can kind of move it to a secondary role. And then even further still, when it gets even higher mileage than that, we can use it to more of a non emergency role. Extraduciator out there, a contractor requires a vehicle to have just lights on, have visibility. We can move those cars into kind of that role or even our SROs. Um, we wanna have obviously a more patrol unit in front of the schools that gives some visibility to the officer and the vision. There's a, there's a present, presence at the school, so um, you sometimes you can move the cars into that kind of role. So we do squeeze as much life out of the cars as we can, um, but of the twenty vehicles that I have in my fleet right now. More than half have over ninety thousand miles, twelve, twelve vehicles have nine thousand or nine miles. So we do need to look at replacing some substantial amount of our fleet. So that's what we're gonna do, our goal is to, to replace those high mileage vehicles and we're gonna work closely with Tyler and his people at the highway department. And identify what vehicle we should get rid of and perhaps move those cars entirely out of the town fleet. A little bit sooner and maybe get a little bit more trading value out of them. If we can, and then get them off of our repair roles and then get them out of the, you know, out of the highway department. Um, cycle of getting repairs or not getting repaired and not requiring parts. So we're gonna work closely with the highway department and hopefully this supply chain issue will get resolved. We'll identify some places that's, that can help us out and we can, we can get some parts and get these vehicles fixed. Any other questions on capital?
And what are other things that kind of were concentrating on vehicles and a couple other?
Yeah.
I just, there was one thing that I was raised about.
What, split gears?
Yeah, didn't, didn't we do that last year?
Yes, there's any annual operating costs for those, um. And I don't know if that was fully funded last year or not, there's a tackle of that one, which off of this. Equipment, software upgrades. The lease for why that tackle. Yes, twenty-five thousand. Although checking to that, we find out why we haven't had it in there, we have it in there, I'm not sure what.
With the same price every year for that?
Yeah.
Like about every year?
Yeah. But we don't have to own it, we don't have to do anything, they go down, we just call them and on the place, it's, it's, we have no ownership of, of the units themselves. There's ten units out there, so we don't have to replace any equipment, we don't have to service it, we don't have to do anything. Software upgrade is all included in that one price. Um, to operating. This year, we're at seven, one, one, zero, seven, nine. Let's say, uh, three point six five percent increase from last year. Largely due to a two and a half percent contractual wage increase and some other uh. Benefits that were, that were contractual. Um, as I mentioned earlier. Three point six five. Um, so with this most recent contract agreement, the town presented into. Um, the retirement plan with the union members that they can opt into a deferred retirement plan. Which basically gives us the heads up of when a person plans to retire, they'll get some pension benefits. But they'll tell us that they're gonna retire a year, two years, three years out. So we can future plan for those really vacancies and get ahead of the curve we're hiring. So as I mentioned, that's what we're doing this year, we're getting two, two officers hired in April in anticipation of the summertime. Um, to July and August retirements.
How long are the officers in, um, they go off to another training?
So, and who we hire, if we hire somebody that's fresh, that's got no, no previous experience, that's a six month academy. Yeah, so it's six months, so typically the hiring process will last a couple of months. The offsite training will last for another six months and then we'll have them onboard with. Field training for another two and a half months, so it's a, it's close to a year cycle from point of. Hire to getting them on the road by themselves for their, you know, regular full-time staff member. So it's a considerable amount of time, um, currently we have at least eight sworn members that are eligible for retirement.
Are they eight?
Yeah, I, I think, well, more could, anybody could retire at any time. But those that are fully vested, that, that have enough time to get their full pension, there's any numbers, but. In, in theory, anybody could, could move in, the younger generations are a little bit more handsome at, at this age too, they'll, you know. Decide they wanna go work in a different sector or a different agency or move to a federal agency or a department that's more enticing. Um, we're fortunate and, and we have a good contract, we have good salary, we have good benefits, we have a solid pension. So we are attracting people from other agencies, um, we were at the graduation ceremony in Bridgeport on Friday night. And I think Bridgeport is down something like two hundred officers. In, in two thousand and seven, they had over four hundred officers, currently in that, uh, somewhere at two hundreds.
Wow.
So, and they only had five individuals in this recent academy class, so. We're in, uh, we're in way better shape than that, fortunately, um, you know, we're, we're, we're hiring good people. We're very selective, we're maintaining a high level of standards, so, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at, we're not in a situation where we're having to hire. Tens, twenties, there are hundreds of people ahead of time, we selectively go through and how many typically we get in the hiring process. To apply, we've kind of switched things up recently in how we do our hiring process, we use an outside agency that does the initial. Uh, physical fitness screening and the initial written test and when we get whoever passes those kind of coming to us.
Yeah, there'll be a number of people that will apply based on those testing criteria. Uh, once, we usually cut it off at a certain score and then we'll interview about twenty people for a, an open interview. So most usually we get, we cut it off at a certain score, usually about eighty percent of the tests.
So we can, we can still be pretty selective and, and move that into the, into the interview. And then, uh, if we, if we don't prime this super candidate, we'll go back to that pool again and, and the interview. So this worked out pretty well for us, so we are pretty stable and we're in, in a good position right now. Um, right now best stat level of forty-seven, but if we need to increase that for, for more specialized units like the SRO program. We'll have to reconsider that. Spoke about the more hiring timelines.
This cabin, you paid for those opportunities there, right?
Yeah, that's the model Connecticut has, a lot of other states, you can, much like going to college, you can, you can go to this academy. And become certified and then go out and get hired, but Connecticut doesn't do like that. Um, but back to your question as far as, so that entry level is a person that takes six months of training. Um, fortunately, sometimes we hire a lot of transfers, there are always sworn officers in Connecticut. We can bring them in, we can get them right on field training, kind of get them up to speed as we can, we can get them on the road within a few months. Um. Like the officer that we currently have going through our, uh, initial training process, he came from New York. So he didn't have to go to the academy, but we gotta give him a couple of months kind of catch up to Connecticut specific training. So it's sort of a comparative analysis, he's gonna be gonna have a road this week. So it's not quite like a sworn officer from Connecticut, but it's not sending him to the academy for the full six months. It's kind of a hybrid model, so we, we look for anybody and everybody.
That was, that's like a, what a favorable thing it is to very kind of train him.
Yeah, yeah, but I think that pool is kind of small and we don't wanna inherit somebody else's problems either, so careful that.
Yeah, I think.
So a big driver of our budget is, is obviously overtime, uh, we always talk about that. Much of, of our overtime costs are uh, labor agreement driven. Um, the last year, and I always like to see is, is training rate is very at the top of the list as far as. Wolf is driving the majority of our overtime, um, you can see some of those other items are ship shortages and war rates. A lot of those are contractual obligations. Um, you can see some of those other items are shift shortages and war rates. A lot of those are contractual obligations.
So, I don't remember how many years ago you instituted a new computer program for scheduling and so forth. That's really still working out?
It's working great, yeah, that's what we utilize this for and can kind of analyze. Um, and I can go back, you know, talking about the SRO, Shane Gibson through the elementary school, I was able to go back to October. And calculate how much overtime moving him off of the shift from to this role as SRO has cost us. It's been about. Eleven thousand dollars in overtime that this cost us to take him off of the ship. So the vacancy that he created on his ship, ship, I think, his role. So with this. With this offer, we're able to do that in a matter of minutes and just. So it's a, it's a great tool for us to kind of analyze those sorts of things, to track those things. And that kind of come up with all these.
Yeah, you check my log.
So some training highlights, I'll let. I think Chief Walsh means is that he kind of spearheads and leads our training, so I'll let him speak to this more highlights.
Sure, we had approximately, the numbers I pulled up today, uh, three thousand two hundred and forty three hours of mandatory training over uh. Training time for this past twenty twenty two. Um, which includes mandatory for the state of firearms or emergency dispatch and emergency medical response, police certification. Uh, de-escalation by the cameras, supervisory training uh, is mandatory and then some other things that are. Um, less hours are also mandatory training time. Uh, we also add some more training, uh, obviously they want just both mandatory, one will blow me down. Uh, just like we tried to do with everything, so we uh. For, for example, we have active threat training, we try to grab a school during the school break. Now the officer kind of walk through the hallway, train on tactical line, training tactical response and then come up with scenario training. You know, the scenario based training we support and simulations, so they can put them in real life situations and. Learn how to make, you know, good shoot and don't shoot scenarios, because one officer trained in that, obviously, and. How to de-escalate situations, how to talk with people, if you say the right things, get the right trigger works and then that person will give up as an actor. Or, you know, or, or will escalate, you know, and then, you know, teach them to be able to realize them. Also, also we have to send up our investigators to, uh, you know, train for various things for, you know, keeping up with their field mostly. Technical trains and learning how to break down problems and analyze, so. And obviously advanced leadership training for our newly uh. Our newly promoted supervisors, most of the sergeants and commanders should train for our tenants. And hopefully have built off and can then send us data to capture the test and, you know, progress in their career. Also, obviously for school resource officers, um, give them the training. And uh, we let officers also split up for different training that they may see offered by other agencies or post council.
Yeah, where is, where do they get school resource officer training?
Uh, there's different places to do it, all over the state and uh, and even the.
So that's a good thing.
Even Massachusetts, oh yeah.
Yeah. Is, is any of this containment anti-biased training, is that included in that or something?
Yeah, it's part of our mandatory training every year. So our request this year for overtime is. Five twenty three, um, last year's. Was five thirty four, so reduce that a little bit. Um, we're on track. The number I got, I ran, when I ran that on the twenty third, I think we're a little bit more than that because I. Like I said, I did identify what we're using. Shane Gibson's um, expenses, we're pulling that from another line item. Um, that was part of the agreement to put him in that position, we're gonna use that uh. Uh, the extra duty fund money. We originally asked for our funding for that, but I think the finance. Um, requested that we use that from existing accounts and we hold that from year to year, so the numbers slightly lower than that, so we're on track for this year. Um. That would be chief Walsh, I looked at five twenty three, the question's pretty comfortable with that, we'd be on track for that for next year.
I'm sorry, did you just explain that and then said why it went down? Is that the whole Shane thing or five eleven, five thirty four to five twenty three?
That was in part Leon's request was, was went from five twenty three, but we looked at uh, what we had budgeted and um. With staffing levels being at. Cool again, we feel confident that we're not gonna incur quite as much overtime in this year. That was it. Chief, I think we covered you with enough questions and I don't have any more. Um, any greater?
Now, how's it going?
Great. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's very good, now it's been uh, been busy, but it's busy, it is good.
So when we move into the uh, other room?
So, uh, thirty nine locusts, they came by the board and after this school year, so June. They're gonna start emptying out, once they're moved out from there, we're gonna outfit it. The Sudanese, so that'll take a month or two and then we'll move in over there and then. They can start, so probably fall twenty three will be moved in at thirty nine locusts.
That's why, cause it's summer, that's why they need to stay there, because I was gonna say, there's all those running events that have to be done down the street, but. They're not gonna be there all summer, so.
They, because they have so much going on over there with with some of the school programs that are out over there, they don't wanna move those kids in those schools.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't wanna wait.
I agree.
I don't wanna speak for Brian, but.
Yeah, I think they're gonna start renovation relatively soon.
Yeah, no, I was thinking of timing, because it seems like a pretty expensive. Project. So, I, so uh, on me.
How are you?
E.
Hey Colin, do you have any uh, questions? I'm sorry, I only have.
No, sorry, I, I came in um, a couple minutes late. No, that was great, I thought it was a very thorough presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Wants to go ahead, we found it, sure.
Hi, so this year, welcome everybody. Uh, this year's Department of Fire Service uh. Budget request. Sorry, um, just a couple of our twenty three goals and objectives. Uh, always maintain current level of service, um, trying to increase efficiency with some of the projects last year. Uh, we installed a new uh, learning system, which is definitely um. Shaving about twenty seconds off uh, our. Turnout time from the firehouse, uh, the way dispatch is sending us the call now. And we also, uh, operational changes, not really money impact, um, of less. Ch-changing apparatus has increased the second new piece getting out, so that's one of the uh, biggest things with efficiency, um. That we've done. We increased volunteer membership, uh, there was eight new, eight new members in twenty two, we already got another one for two thousand and twenty three, they got loaded in. So uh, increased the um, the firefighters, they're a long ways out from being. Uh, qualified, they're gonna have to start, you know, fire one program, hopefully next week they're starting, at least half of them. Uh, and getting trained up so they can be interior firefighter, so that's a long process, kind of similar to our um, our police counterparts going through. Someone coming in from um, not having any training. But it's good, you know, a lot more active than the company now with those uh, extra people, so that's a. Big help for us and yes, we're actually on there.
Um. Chief, what's the full complement now of volunteers?
Volunteers, we have twenty, I think I counted, but twenty five in the annual report, I think it was twenty five volunteers. That, they're not all, they're not all certified and. Um, you know, full blown firefighters, a lot of them are probation, uh, still on probation though, but there's twenty five on the active roster. Uh, we did implement a new records management system where. I guess this is good and that we didn't, that's one of my swings and misses, I don't see, but uh, we're in the process of taking our old twenty year old system. And uh, turning it into what's called perthoo, so we're transferring information over and implementing new as we go along, so. Uh, that's been a pretty heavy lift. Uh, we have a lot, we lot to, we've done already and then still we have some that we haven't gotten there yet. Um, some good things, other good things we did and we really increased this year, over a hundred public education events in the community. Uh, anything from, you know, just being out on Elm Street for the table in the summer, we did coloring for kids, farmer's market. Um, some stuff we did, but we, I think we increased the number of them and we documented a lot better. But we're definitely out at a holiday stroll, we were out there, uh, Halloween, uh, setting up a table, yeah, we're giving some swag away. But um, we also gave away some, some uh, some informational cards and. And documents that people could take home with it, so uh, there's us at the um. Farmer's market, there's a summer, we did coloring around Fourth of July for the kids. Um, we actually had to babysit one kid, mom went shopping while we were there, but that's, that's a whole other.
That's smart.
That was good, but we, we handled it, we, we, we did that.
There's a duty pay right there.
And there's a holiday stroll, we actually set up, um, you know, the kids got uh. The kids got actual candy, took off the Christmas tree, but the, the parents learned about a safe living room.
Starting off pretty early.
Yeah, so that too, that was the byproduct of it, but just understanding um, the hazards of uh, some of the Christmas decorations. Is what we um, were set out to do on the holiday stroll. And we did institute a QR code, um, with all our document, all our documents that we created. Um, and other thing, like we did something on lithium battery, lithium ion batteries. Um, you know, Mike and I were talking about Teslas uh, for a while now, but even the smaller batteries being an issue, so. We got a lot of information out uh, for that. We also, uh, the firefighters came to me and mentioned the. Disconnect with a lot of our people that moved into town with how to run their house. Electrical panels, furnaces, fireplace flues. So I hope we actually did something for newcomers to uh, have a two sided page of things that they should be aware of in their house, so. Again, all that's on the uh, on the QR code, they can go to the website and see that, but it's just continual that we're pu- pushing out the pub ed.
Prevention.
Yeah, dog.
Yes.
That was good, uh, we did that. Um, where we missed, uh, probably put this on your list, uh, Deputy Chief, the rescue passports, that was. That was on my radar to get us back together with EMS, uh, we haven't gotten that far yet to put, you know, to do multiple agency. For that, so that was one thing I had in my budget, uh, goals for last year. Uh, we pre-planned the commercial district as we wanted to, but that's part in that the records management systems are a little farther behind. Than we wanted to be here in January, so we're looking at a spring pickoff and getting the firefighters into the uh, commercial businesses. And do pre-planning. This is different from our inspection, uh, our inspections, you know, fire marshal's office. Is phenomenal, getting their annuals and everything's on a two, that's not annuals, on a two year cycle, which is very good. And especially our, our multi-family residential's are all, those are annual inspections, but most of your larger cities. Are not um, meeting that requirement, so our guys downstairs doing a great job and I should say my admin assistant Jill also with the scheduling of them. They're getting people out there, so pre-planning is a little different, that's us going in there and learning. Where to shut water off, how to, you know, where their electrical panel is, where their keys are for the building if we need to get in, you know, in the, you know, early morning hours if there was a call. That's really on the fire side versus the inspection side. Uh, last year I talked about where I was pretty happy about going for a grant and we missed the big one. Uh, I actually swung and missed all three of them I went for, so uh, we're trying to gamble Greg this year, but uh, we're still looking at different grant funding opportunities. Uh, the big one being um, FEMA's assistance firefighter's grant. Uh, that one's big dollars for equipment, uh, training, things that we need, you know, as, as line personnel. But I'm also looking at uh, other organizations for uh, a lot of public education stuff, smoke detectors, uh. You know, PSAs get stuff out to the public, so that, that seems to be easier to get on the community side, so. We're targeting the smaller ones now, like Greg can give me a, a hand getting some of that out there, insurance companies and so on. Which puts us the, what we're trying to do for uh, twenty four. Um, again, implement the records management, continue our, our pub ed out there, looking at new opportunities, get out there, grant funding. And then I'm starting to look at our. Um, where do we meet up against our um, national standards that are out there for the fire service? Similar to PD's accreditation, we don't have a, a legal standpoint for that per se, but a lot of these are referenced that there is a, a fire loss. Or if there is a um. Something terrible happens, something gets injured, they'll, um, they reference some of these NFPA standards on where we're. Where's the fire department compared to these? So the ISO standard is the one that's mostly used, which sets your insurance rate for your houses. Uh, and more important for businesses, so that's, that's one that we get audited out of five to ten year cycle and um. We're currently at four, which is reasonably good for a town that's uh, doesn't have the water supplies that most cities have.
And have them for.
But that, a four, so the tens will work, one being the best, um, so water supply really um. Impacts that number for us, you, you know, trying to, it's very difficult for us to bring it down based on water supplies, but that's still an ongoing project also in the uh. On the fire side with the fire marshal.
So, so is ten high or one high?
Ten is bad, one is the best.
Of course, it has times like four.
Four, four is actually good, I mean, you know, coming from where I came from, the law was only three. You know, they had some areas with water issues also, so uh, they, they're agreed. Uh, we meet the standards, you know, our train, in-house training, stuff that we, is very easy for us that if we're doing it, you know, we have the apparatus. Um, we have the, the training for the people, um. You know, our fire marshal's office, as I just mentioned, that's huge in the public education, I didn't, you know, but. All that's great, we can get perfect scores, but the water really drags us down.
But we're better than Gary, that's all.
That's a good question, I, I, I definitely guess it's contender, so.
Better than Gary, that's obvious.
You know what, they, they have hydrants in a lot of their areas, but I can't say we are, but I'll, I'll make that as my goal.
Some years ago we were six, so.
Oh, they, yeah, yeah, and I didn't, you know, I didn't go back to. You know, I know, uh, Chief Hennessy talked about it in some of his previous presentations that.
Yeah, it affects all of our homeowners.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, to some degree, absolutely. Um. Yeah, just, uh, Chief Hennessy years ago put the mutually plan together with tankers, you know, that's definitely brought down and the, the, the water. Systems that we do have dry hydrants around the town has brought that down over the years, so.
Right.
Paul Payton is still looking for opportunities for that, we're actually working with Tiger now. To look at his uh, capital improvement plan for roads. If there's a cul-de-sac or some type of dead end on town property that we can put our own system in, because the homeowners don't seem to. No one's coming forward to say, hey, I want ten thousand gallons in my front yard. So every new building permit, they're actively asking them, but no one's really taking it on themselves to do it, it's quite expensive for them to do it, so we're looking at other options. You know, with Tiger and say, hey, you know, we're doing this cul-de-sac, we're gonna pay, so we wanna drop a tank in there and so on, so. Looking at different ways that we've been doing it, moving up to now. So I'll start offering, uh, we have a five to seventy percent increase, the overall ask is four point five. Uh, just over four point five million, it is five point seven percent, uh, five point eight percent decrease, which is uh, two hundred and forty seven thousand. Uh, eight thirteen. What the major drivers are here is the, our contractual salaries went up to the twenty four. Uh, career staff, which was two and a half percent uh, from last year. Um. The big one here, um, that I redid, I recalculated the holiday time that the firefighters get. We, a little different the way our shift work, um, we have thirteen holidays that the firefighters can take anytime. So I'll throw up my slide here, um, so each person gets thirteen holidays, those are days they can take off, if someone wanted to take a holiday today. They can take it off today, let's call it their New Year's Day, which is today, so based on our minimum staffing of six, every time somebody takes off, I have to fill. That vacancy to maintain six firefighters uh, on duty. So I recalculated thirteen holidays, um, and I also, when the firefighter is working the bona fide. Holiday, which is in the town guidebook in our, in their contract, I have to pay the firefighter at, at a time and half rate, firefighter captain or lieutenant. Um, so based on that, um, we came up with a recalculated time and it ends up being three hundred and twelve thousand. Uh, for the uh. Uh for the um holiday time. And that was almost as a twenty-two percent increase overall on the salary line, based on that. Um there could be a small reduction in that based on firefighters that can elect to sell time back. But that normally does not happen. Most of them will use, take the day off in lieu of the holiday, which will create the overtime. Um and they have the right to either sell them or take them. So uh they can do that. Uh they can bank six of them, but all the firefighters have a full bank, so they have to burn thirteen. So previous years, new people coming on, which increased that holiday number. Now everybody's. Right now set. There's no no more room to bank. So they're all receiving the thirteen. So I I'll take any questions if I didn't explain the holiday time correctly. Uh training time was increased.
Based on. That's holiday time versus the rest of the increase to get to the five point seven eight.
The holiday time increased uh twenty twenty-two percent.
Right, I'm sorry. So what was the what was the uh wrong number like the?
Total is uh my number for twenty-four is three hundred thousand twelve.
Right, so.
Three hundred twelve thousand dollars.
So the difference is whatever.
The difference is roughly seventy thousand. If I could, I mean, I could pull up that spreadsheet from off, but it's roughly seventy thousand increase. Um from twenty-three. And my training time, um we do a lot of on-shift training, um but the training time was increased. Based on, again, re-looking at um. What we have contracted and what we need to do. Career staff receives thirty hours annually. That they could take and go off-site for training, whether that's officer level club level classes. Uh rescue classes. Different things that they can take. Basically, that's um basically. If they do it right, they could get four days, four days of a class. Um you know, paid for that they're on, you know, that they can take off. They don't get paid overtime to go. They're actually get, they're just taking off their shift. If their ship uh lands on that. So. For the thirty hours they get, they probably take, you know, they put in another thirty of their own time because they don't get paid overtime for um. Some of those other classes that they attend. Um so that's the top staff hours that works out to seven hundred and forty hours. Uh annually for training time and that's the cost of thirty thousand on average between the whole ranks. Officer training, which is required by um national standards, one being OSHA and ISO. Um we need additional uh hours of training above and beyond firefighters. So basically, I'm I'm doing staff meetings uh quarterly. And that works out that six officers are on duty on overtime. Uh which equals forty-eight hours uh for the meeting with seventy-six there. Thirty-six hundred, seventy-seven hundred. Special lot training, um the contract, and we belong to uh Kirkville County Mutual Aid Agreement, which um. Has the hazmat team and the regional communications team. So I have five firefighters between those two teams. Uh that attend regular meetings on a annual, a monthly basis for the year. Uh and that's the um. Three hundred and sixty hours total uh for the members to attend that. And there's the twenty-eight thousand there. The big hit that we unfortunately, as Nick Williams called it, the unfunded mandate. Uh our EMS recertification changed. Um they went to a continuing education, continuing education unit model, CEUs. Um so they had, the firefighters have to keep track of their hours um that they um that they. Are in a class for EMS recertification. So what we did in early twenty-one and we're in the process of um. Our second round of recertification, basically you need forty hours uh every two years. Um for recertification. So it was set up, just as I was coming in with Chief Hennessy. That we were uh gonna do a class every month. That they would do online. And then there's there's practical stuff that they have. Now that COVID is restricted, they're done. We actually have practical in the firehouse on a regular basis every few months. But that re- EMS recertification cost me uh a four-hour block of training overtime. For the sixteen firefighters that are not working that day. So the instructor will provide the online training. Six people are on duty, excuse me, eighteen, eighteen firefighters are gonna be online. With the same class from their homes. So that's really um. Put a hit on the current recertification budget for EMS. So that was one of the big ones that uh we needed to um. We needed to address.
So training costs, there's a delta on the training cost then versus last year?
Yeah, oh yeah, they, yeah, and I could go back and get the percentage, but EMS, I wanted to account for that this year. I didn't have it. It definitely wasn't accounted for uh for the training overtime last year. Uh and the one thing that I did add, uh trying to bring our career or volunteer staff together. Um we. Do one live fire training a year, which is. OSHA required, but we wanted to increase that to um have the availability. Actually, we do um. Two live fires now. We want to bring that to four, which will give more opportunities for our career staff and our volunteers. Um to work together under fire conditions. Um really get to know each other, you know, inside a fire building, which the good thing is we don't see often in town, but. Having been prepared for it is uh important. So that's um. That's added on there and also with the amount of volunteers coming on. Uh looking to do our own in-house firefighter one, which is the basic firefighter program for the volunteers. So and that would be our firefighters teaching uh new members coming in. So. That's the huge um, a large increase in that uh training budget. I will go back and once I'm done, I can take a look at the spreadsheet. Uh and see that. So those are the the big, the big numbers for the training increases. We increased um. The callback, um that was based on averages. So callback is when there is a uh a specific, you know, of an actual fire. Or we're going mutually into another town, the career staff uh contractually could come back. Uh that was funded pretty low over the last few years because the numbers uh seemed to have gone down and people weren't coming back. Now we're getting um the mutual aid requests and the uh. You know, we don't have a ton of callbacks in town, but you know, the few that we have are getting a lot more members back. So. You know, I'm really encouraging, you know, this the firefighters to come back for that. Um you know, based on the the number of volunteers that we have that are not trained right now. So that's been increasing over the last few months. Uh and required physical uh in my um. Yeah, operating went up. What we're looking at is to do a full NFPA fifteen eighty-two physical. Um for the members were, again, this is required, this is an O two requirement that. We're not sure that we're doing it properly. So meaning everyone's getting a physical, but some people are going to their own doctor, which may not be an occupational health specialist. Which OSHA and then OSHA is the more important one, but they require that, and so does NFPA. So they want an occupational health doctor to actually manage the fire department physicals versus. Your pediatrician that you had for thirty years. So, you know, and they're and they're checking a firefighter off. They might not be doing everything. I don't want to call any doctors out, but they might not be doing everything that NFPA is requiring for a. A true fire, uh active firefighter to get on an annual basis.
Did you not have any contract that that the revert to town physician?
The contract does not have anything on the, we have not on the physical. And honestly, you know, and this is, this is a tough one for me on the financial side, because. People go to their own doctor and they're like, okay, you know, I got my physical, I get checked off. So it's not, there's no. Financial impact for us, but to the HR part of it, we're looking at it as, well, we're not doing what is. Supposed to be done under OSHA and um. And um, you know, NFPA with the requirements. So that that's, that was a huge increase in in the physicals. I don't know, you know. This again, we're looking at starting in July. So I, these physicals won't start after the beginning of twenty-four. Uh we do have some union uh discussions to have with them as we move forward and how we're gonna do that.
I'm sure it's not a big number. I just think like when you go to school, like there's things that the doctor has to check off for the kid. Like, I think it's kind of the same thing, right? Like if you have it, I understand. Like if you just went to get a physical, they're just gonna get a basic physical. But if you walked in with like a sheet of everything that needs to be checked out, the doctor, his own doctor, probably the same thing. Again, that one's a big number. There's been some slippage in the accuracy of the reporting. And that would.
Well, I I don't know if every doctor, you're supposed to do any K D, you know, you have to do spirometry. I don't know if every doctor can do that in their office.
Yeah, and yeah, I'm just thinking like, cause my parents have had a certain like physical and the doctor would normally do that, but I have a list and everything's got to, and he does it. So I don't, again, maybe we don't have that. And even if this is worth talking down to how big this number is, but feel like that.
Well, Chief, do you have the number there? I do.
Uh if you have it, I don't.
The 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 the, you said it's not a big number and in my opinion, you you're correct. It it's thirty-two thousand for the entire department.
But percentage wise, it was a huge increase.
Right.
Percentage is why, I think it's a flag that's why.
But we have to, but we have to do it.
Yes. Um the other large percentage increases are here. Um. But they, you know, they're they're small amounts, they total less than eighty-eight hundred. So, you know, so increase the things, like we added a line item um. Back for our pub ed and called it under advertisement. So that was a large percentage increase. And some of these were um large percentage increases, but the total amount only added up to just under eighty-eight hundred dollars would be increases.
No, I think the issue is, at what point do we, I think I was just at the general government. Budget this afternoon, and then I believe all the town employees here have the same position. They don't use them for for physicals or general physicals. Yeah.
Chances of their CBL physical. Possibly.
That was a two o'clock decision there. Sorry.
So yeah, that's trying to get there. So we're trying to make sure we're, and and you know, not looking as as far as physicals, just trying to make sure people are helping to do the. The job that they're gonna be required.
And you shouldn't do that. It's again, like to looking for ways to.
Right.
To eliminate wastes of all, um and and of course, that, you know.
That trade, going back to the, the increase on training time is already on, you know, looking at better ways to. You know, bring the the training back into the firehouse versus the online, which will really cut down on that training time. So that's one of them. You know, that's one of the ones that. It's it's needed training. There's no, I'm not arguing against training. It's just the way it's being delivered. I think it could be more efficient.
During during shift or.
Right, that's what, that's where I want to go with it. And I'm working with the vendor now um moving forward. So I don't know. But hopefully by the end of the year, that'll be resolved.
And then travel with that one?
Travel, we reinstituted um going to fire conferences. So um either, you know, Firehouse Expo, um Fire Department Instructors Conference, um. One's in Indianapolis, the other one was in um, used to be in Baltimore, they moved it. Um so hazmat conference down in Baltimore. So just to get um other perspective, the members that go, the unions sponsor somebody. The uh company sponsors somebody and the department will sponsor somebody or or pairs of people. To go to the conferences and bring back, you know, the cutting edge training and equipment, things that they saw at the show. So that's kind of, and that was a line item. And that was zero value the last few years. And that was a huge increase in um, you know, percentage wise. But that's probably the set for two people to travel somewhere in the United States is the number that comes up there.
Chief, I I have a question if that's okay. Uh on the reconciliation of the uh holiday time. Um with, does that apply to past years and is the town on the hook for any, you know, wrongly calculated time?
I will, uh when I brought this up to Josh Baughman, uh I think he realized that we might be. Um underfunded for twenty-three. And part of that was because the June, the the Juneteenth holiday. Was added after our budget went in last year. So that was, we only had twelve budgeted holidays going into it. So. Uh and unfortunately, they were uh prior to this year, it was always done on an average. So I think by calculating on the average between nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. With um new firefighters coming on, I think the average was lower than where I am now with the calculation. So we may be on the hook. For a little bit over what it was budgeted for.
Yeah, I guess what I really was asking, uh, did we underpay uh firefighters? Who would have been entitled to the time and a half and didn't receive their time and a half?
Oh, no, not at all. They all, they they were paid every two weeks uh the way they were supposed to. Uh it's it's initially on our line items. That's it. And the budget in the finance side.
Okay, thank you.
We may have undergone it, yeah. So yes, but then we have, we had, and let's, yeah, the good lines last year is we were way under on. The funded injury line that um has been on there. And then the sick timeline was only at about seventy-five percent, seventy-eight percent. Uh you, so that that was good. So we saved um a lot of money there. I like that. So. Any other questions like that? I mean, uh. Uh our capital plan, which was um, it's about one point two five million. Um. If you, from last year, I moved in the big number, we'll talk about the pumper replacement. I did move it up from twenty-four to twenty-five to twenty-three to twenty-four. So going into this year. Uh only because of the the timeframe to get it built and the exponential cost increase that we're seeing. Um in the fire service with apparatus, because of materials. So the cost is rising and the uh they're pushing out apparatus uh somewhere between two and three years now to get it built and delivered to you. So I, yeah, I want to get it started sooner. We won't, we won't be paying for it probably till twenty-five, but that's the. Uh the vendors need to know, you know, what are we working with? Our committee needs to know what we're working with as far as uh cost. So. There's all of, I'm gonna go through a few um. Uh things out here. So.
Can't any more of those coming in in the years out?
Uh apparatus, you know, so looking at the five-year plan, the ladder truck, which that's a a low number right now. Is due based on a um. A projection of a ladder truck and our tanker would go live for twenty-five years. Um and then we get maintenance reasons and starting to have problems. You know, with recertifying some of the things. So that's why we're looking out um. You know, for twenty-five years, our ladder truck will be due. So I I would expect that number to go up for new. Uh but there's also a potential for refurbishment, which would be probably three quarters of the cost. So if we refurb the current apparatus that we had. So and that's something that we'll start looking at a few years out to start um looking at what our uh. Um options are for, you know, kind of basically reworking it and. Getting, you know, keeping the actual rig that we have now. The problem with our ladder truck is. Um it's the only one that fits in the station. So um. Refurb.
Station.
Was that?
Captain in the station.
I didn't tell me that. The ladder truck uh. Our height restriction on the ladder truck, uh there's no, there's currently no chassis out there that uh. Will be able to back into our bed. So um refurbishing what we have as of today is probably the answer. I don't, unless somebody builds a low-profile chassis uh to fit. So um kind of already looking at that for the the future, but that's where we are right now.
Okay. Are we already?
And you see, the on the five-year plan, you'll see our big hits, um you know, for personal protective equipment. Uh fire gears. Fire gear is only, um, again, and our OSHA and N F P A are saying ten year service life. Um, so we had a large group of gear that was purchased, probably three quarters of our department was purchased in two thousand and fourteen. So I'm coming up on the ten years between, you know, next year and then the next. So trying to spread it out over a few years, uh, to repurchase, um, the fire gear.
I want to see also, cause it's just come around and go somewhere. We think we talked about.
The United States, I mean, we can, uh, yeah, so whoever, if someone doesn't have OSHA, then they can take it, but otherwise, uh. For the most part, it's going outside the United States. Uh, so our new engine, uh, like I said, our, our current rig that we're looking to replace now, pumblers, we look at twenty, um. We, we look at twenty to twenty five years old for replacement. So we're already at twenty six, uh, for this engine. Um, this nineteen ninety seven, um, pumper. It doesn't meet our current operational plans. That's the one reason why we don't even wanna entertain a, a refurb on this thing is you can't. We wanna put more water on wheels based on the town. Um, so we wanna, uh, have a larger capacity water tank. Uh, as its third duty piece out of the firehouse, in case we don't have the hybrid in the area, we don't have a cistern in the area. Um, most rural areas like ourselves aren't putting hose on the ground as much and trying to find a water supply. Um, we're using what's called a pointer shuttle. So by us having another, well, I'll call them mini tanker, cause our current tanker's three thousand gallons. This thing would be in the area of twelve hundred fifty to fifteen hundred. That's what we're shooting for, of gallons of water. Um, to have that second, that third piece out to have more water on site with our callback staff and our volunteers to get it out. Instead of waiting on mutually tankers. That's kind of our focus on it, um, and replace, it's still gonna run as primary as an engine if needed when it's stacked. So it can do everything, uh, uh, our, our regular engine can do, but we just wanna have more water on it and keep it on a single axle. So. Um, and this one's a, a lot of N F P A standards, a lot of stuff in the cab, you know, rollover protection, a lot of safety stuff that this one doesn't have. And, you know, that chassis won't be able to handle the, um, the water weight. And we also wanna add to our tri, I didn't get the Tri Van Radio Grant, uh, which I went for last year. Uh, we put in fifteen thousand in twenty three's capital for, uh, partial grant. We would have a, a grant match. Uh, that money hasn't been spent yet, but for the bare minimum that we need to do for our Tri Van radios. Requesting another twenty five thousand to get the six to eight radios, uh, that we want for our, our career staff that runs, uh, mutually. Uh, into our neighboring towns. Uh, we need the, uh, we can't talk to anybody anymore. Stanford went to a, um. They went to a, uh, state system, which our radios can't talk to. Uh, Wilton's in the process and so is Norwalk going in, in the process of, um, switching over to the state system. So when our firefighters go to their towns. We're, we can't talk to anybody on, on scene, uh, which is a safety issue. Coming into us, we don't have any issues. When they come into us, their radios are able to talk to us on our frequencies, cause they're older frequencies and we're not on the state system. But the, um, my fear is going into Wilton and they're go, you know, in a house fire and someone gets trapped or disoriented and nobody hears them, cause. If they call, they're only calling their officer that's with them, that could be tracked also. So there's no, no commander that's listening on the outside of myself or Russ responding, uh, outside of town, which is not uncommon. With pick going and Wilton will go with them and listen and say, if they in Norwalk, I'll listen if they go on a call when they're covering. You know, I'll listen. So if they go on something, then I'll go. So I have the radio to listen to them. So that's the, the Tri Van Radio, um, and, you know, we had it last year.
Saying the other, the rain has had older technology.
What's that?
You're saying that's running kind of older technology?
The, no, they're all going to, I'm gonna call this. They're going to a different.
Eight hundred megahertz or.
Yeah. Seventy.
Hundreds of different frequencies, that's all of it.
The reason why they're big or not.
Well, the benefit of the other towns jumping on the state network.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's huge money reasons, but they can, um, they definitely can get a lot more frequency down that network at, at zero dollars.
Yeah.
The city is, they seem to have a lot of frequency. So it's a lot less licensing for us and everything. For that town to do it and they can go on the state system and they give them a bank of radios. It's a shared system.
Well, right. So we are, or we're not?
We are not on the state system. And we would be a long ways out if we were thinking about. That radio, that radio will be on the state system for Stanford, Norwalk. I, that radio will get us onto the state system.
But we're not, uh, we're not like, it'll get us on the state system, but we're not.
We, our frequency here in Kanan, I, we're not on the state system. We just have our own K N frequency.
I'll be discussing the state system in my presentation, just so you know.
So the key, you know, yeah, just then our firefighters talking to the other towns is, uh.
I understand the importance of it. Yeah. I'm just wondering why we're just not all the same as this somewhere.
So our, we were, we were headed in going to a new rig system, sounds like. And Russell talked more about this, but we were already.
Which over eight hundred.
Yeah.
It's not to change our radius. We'd have to change out the ball bearings and instructor and it's millions and millions of dollars.
Yeah, I get it. How they get, how they handle it, yeah.
They either were already or they had some, I, I, I can't speak for.
Well, no, our system's almost twenty years old. So it's, it, it was time for them to upgrade. So they're going, so same thing with Stanford. They had systems that were over twenty years old and now the state system is an option. So they, they went on the states. That was it. So yeah, we were proactive, uh, um, years ago. There probably was our states.
It's like a whole cast where we, we looked at going to the inner frequency, but it wasn't worth the expansion because we didn't get on a panic component. We, we didn't give us for the read, didn't get any buildings better. So there was no purpose to do it, but that huge expense, it wouldn't be massive.
Uh, building improvements, this is our current meeting room. Uh, that's the, uh, trophy case for our fire company. And that's our bookcase for, uh, unfortunately, and got some piles there. So, uh, this is a, a underutilized wall. And what I'm trying to do, uh, is to clean that up. I need to get some more storage. We're doing a lot more training. We have props. We have things that we need. So I'm looking at, uh, redesigning that wall and I'm incorporating what are called Murphy beds. Uh, that's one of the biggest complaints, um, for the volunteers is they, they wanna put time into the firehouse, but they don't have a place to stay. To stay overnight. So to catch a night call when they're available. Um, so this will incorporate, the beds will go up into a closet. And then if they're staying over, uh, on their duty night, or we have a storm and I need to put, uh, put them in service as an additional apparatus. They'll have a s- place to lay down overnight. So, um. I put in for the entire project, uh, for thirty thousand. Um, but there's potential that the fire company will assist me in doing some of this, which could reduce that capital cost. We're looking at, um, just maximizing the meeting room. And that's the trophy case that will look much better in the, in the middle there. Um, and then, uh, looking at in the, um, I should have said in the ca, in the operating, uh, H R and. Myself, we put in for the replacement of our career assistant chief as of Ju, January of next year, but funded for half a year again. Um, and, um, we, we proceed with that, having that, um, vehicle, uh, in the, um, in the capital plan to, uh, add to the, uh, the. New project is water rescue equipment. So that's, um, twenty thousand. And we learned a lot from our emergency management hurricane exercise for all the incidents that, um. That we've had over the years, people on top of cars in the Jell-O mill area, um, you know, kayak in the Silver Mine River. Um, and various things we've learned that we didn't, there's a boat at highway somewhere that they have. Um, so all these things, um. That's, this, this technically will handle, right now we can handle, um, static water very well. Ice rescue, we can handle very well with our equipment. Um, but our equipment doesn't meet the, uh, standard for swift water. So it's really an equipment increase and some training. That would, um, do this and we have to protect the civilians a little more with the swift water than we do with the, uh, stack, you know, the, the stationary water such as our. Um, so what this includes, they'll get twenty thousand dollar request. Um, there's a picture of what happens in swift waters if somebody in a car, uh, making a rescue, not our people. But, uh, it's just, we're gonna start to, um, replace our, our current water wetsuits. Our cold water suits with the swift water suit. So there's two of them that the, uh, project proposes. Uh, we have to change our personal flotation device. The ones we have now, if, uh, if they get caught in swift water, whether it's a rescuer or a, um, or a victim, it'll actually pull them down. Uh, and not float. So this is a, uh, a different type of vest that they can use in the, um, in the swift water environment. And we're gonna add a boat to, since everyone was, uh, concerned at the hurricane drill that there was only one boat. This one is good for swift water and ice. Um, you actually go over the victim with the open ends and pull them up onto that black area in the middle. Um, so that way we can, uh, pull the victim out and they'll have a place to stay and then we can hand them a, a flotation device if needed. Uh, in that case. So that's the, um, the gist of the, uh, the equipment. I mean, there's throw bags, there's some ropes that have to go with it. But the, these are the major parts of it. There'll be enough P F Bs for, um. Other responders too, that are working near the edge, if they're assisting. So police department EMS, if they are near the edge, we're gonna be able to hand them a, um, a flotation device.
Have we had any of these ever?
Ye- yeah, for one, um, the, they had two incidents over in the Weed Street, Jell-O Mill type area with high water. Uh, one person was on top of their car, um. And another one that it was right in that same area, it might have been the same storm that a father and son were wa- walking along a wall with the water going. Pretty much right next to it. So it's a normal, like a three foot high wall that the water was moving next to it outside of the river. Um, it's. And I lived near Silver Mine River and it definitely had that potential. You know, someone goes in there. So I saw it in two thousand eight. Uh, with the amount of, um, rain we had and the snow melt and it, um. It, uh, pushed the water over the edges and started moving and people. We did, again, public education is the best thing for them. Try to keep them out of the water, but people try to drive through it and get their car stuck. And next thing you know, they're getting out of their car and they don't realize that they can get swept away, uh, pretty easy on this.
Yeah, last year a state trooper died.
That's right.
Happened like that.
So yeah, there, there is definitely potential now with the, whatever's changing climatically or, you know, with infrastructure and, you know, building. You know, the, the, the water is definitely moving, um, much faster. Uh, my other recurring projects here, you saw S C B cylinders, that's an ongoing. A project right now, we, um, we have about seventy eight cylinders. For the department and about a third of them came due. Uh, D O T requires them to be replaced at fifteen years. Uh, so we're in the process of replacing those up to a level. Uh, that we make sure we have a primary cylinder and a backup cylinder for all the riding positions on the fire apparatus. So we're in the process of, um, bringing those back up. Again, P P E, I had talked about, uh, another. Good and bad issue, uh, increased volunteer membership is a cost per P P E. Once they become active, I can't have them in gear that's less than, uh. Ten, it's over ten years old. So they go through the basic firefighting, beat up the old gear that we keep. So that's one thing we do with the old gear. And, um, once they're, you know, good to go in a real fire, uh, we need to get them, um, compliant gear. So that we're getting good volunteers, like it's costing, uh, just over three thousand, thirty five hundred dollars for the setting here to keep them safe. Uh, A E Ds are coming up, rescue tools, which we are, um. Uh, putting in for the grant requested here, uh, with the assistance of firefighters grant, working with, uh, Greg Riley on, um. I'm getting that done for next week and get it submitted. So trying to get some, uh, new rescue tools. And as always, like I mentioned earlier, the water supply improvements, um. Probably well underfunded, but it's, um. We're working, yeah, we're still keeping that, um, line that, you know, if we could get something in, you know, we could probably get a cistern or a quarter concrete. Um, structure in a cold sack, um, that's gives us some water. So that is all the fire department's, um, request for twenty four. You know, capital, again, was one point two four and that's with that apparatus. That'll be a, a twenty four to thirty month. Design and build process. Um, but again, needing to, um, get the project started and understanding what we're working with, um. Is, you know, big for the, uh, the vendors that are getting swamped to what order we're right now. If you want any questions on those lines, I can, you know, pull that up if you need.
No questions, if I may, Chief. The bigger can it lower your I S O green at all?
Uh, you have to reevaluate. It could add some help to us getting, you know, water to those areas, right?
I, I would just say, I live, my house is off Jell-O Mill. I remember those floods and it was, it was scary, uh, down, uh, on Jell-O Mill. So it's a good, thanks.
With the more hurt, if I have more hurricanes and.
Yeah.
I don't want you guys having to improvise.
No, I wasn't a fan. I, I wasn't a fan. I did, I never got on the swift water team on U S R, uh, Urban Search and Rescue. Um, I'm not a big fan of swimming long distances. So I couldn't pass the swim test, but I didn't wanna go into that division of U S R. Uh, and they, the way U S R does it, it's so, everyone's got their own suit. And I really like, when the members came to me, I'm like. I don't know, this seems like an expensive ordeal to, you know, suit everybody up and, you know, we're gonna have to play with Wilton and really do a mutual aid. Make sure we have coverage and the class that they took and what, what level we're gonna bring the entire department to. Um, that's a home run for, uh, initial. And again, we're gonna replace suits on the, ongoing. Year after year, but that's, that initial is, um, is a cheap investment for the way the, the guys wanna do it. Um, so it's definitely doable.
So interesting though, because, you know, as time has gone by, you know, it's less fire and more other things too, right? Cause there were.
Oh, yeah, we become more hazardous.
Right. I mean, think, think historically, right? Cause they'd get a lot more fires a long time ago, right? And it seems like now you're doing more variety of things that like. Whatever the need is, but it's not the same, uh, experience or it's not the same skill. It's.
It's quite, a lot more technical.
Yeah. So you have to, certain people do certain things and certain people, I don't know.
Right. When you visited us the other day, I talked about the, the grant request and, um. You know, just the, the tools and the, the extracations that, um, we're up against now. You know, tools are fifteen, almost fifteen years old. We can't cut, you know, a lot of the new cars. Sixty percent of the cockers. And, uh, that's what we put in for the grant. Sixty percent of the cars are newer than two thousand fifteen, which have a stronger steel in them. That our two thousand nine tools, in theory, wouldn't cut. I'm sure they're gonna force them and they probably will cut them, but then, you know, not the best way to go. So that's why we put that grant request in. Uh, for the, for the new tools and see how we're gonna go with, uh, on that route. Uh, otherwise we replace them on a smaller scale as we, um. Move forward. But yeah, all the change in technology is huge.
All right, Chief. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else? Russ, or yours?
All right. Thank you. Sorry I'm not there in person. Uh, today's the last day of my vacation and just prior to this meeting, I got back from the airport. So. Literally just before this meeting. So apologies, I'm not there in person. Let me know, uh, if you are able to see the screen.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right. So emergency management, uh, twenty four budget requests. Um, so our mission is to protect lives and property of citizens of New Canaan, preparing, planning for emergencies and coordinating disaster response recovery. Uh, disseminating public information, uh, as you are aware, we do all the callouts whenever there are large scale events in town. Um, and we coordinate emergency response, not only in partnership with our own fire police, E M S, first responder agencies, and CERT. Uh, but we also are the conduit, uh, upwards to state and federal coordination. Um, part of my job description also is, um, doing the FEMA public assistance grant requests, which, um. Uh, Bill had been doing a great job at, uh, and, uh, managing, um, requests, particularly with COVID reimbursement for, uh, expenses related to COVID. But in, uh, normal, normal times, I suppose, hurricanes and, uh, all of those sorts of things, uh, where there's an actual federal disaster, uh, declaration. And, you know, I think everyone's already hit on the, the types of events that we. See and or have to be able to be prepared to navigate, which include everything from biological, chemical, radiological, nuclear, explosive. Critical resource shortages, demonstration, civil unrest. critical resource shortages, demonstration civil unrest, earthquakes, um, power outages and infrastructure failures. Unfortunately, you know, I, it seems like across every one of these lines, these sorts of incidents are becoming more common across our country. Um, I mean, who would have ever thought that we would be in a time where people would just randomly start shooting electrical substations? Um, so uh, unfortunately, that's the reality and, and as the chief alluded to. Um, our climate is becoming more impactful storms. Uh, and much Tiger was mentioning in a, a meeting previously, you know, that even the rain events that we're getting are much more compressed, much more, um, impactful quantities of water than we've really seen historically. Um, so in the year in review, we conducted, as Albie was mentioning, uh, disaster tabletop exercise this year. With all the department has, we had a phenomenal participation by everybody in town, uh, as well as the state of Connecticut came down. Uh, where we had a simulated category uh, for, I think it was a landfall hurricane. Um, which was really eye opening. We brought in two experts from California who have a tremendous amount of experience dealing with wild and fires and things like that. Uh, and uh, you know, I think they rattled some folks uh, with the realization that if we had a truly serious hurricane or an event like that. You know, eighty percent of your trees would be down and your power would be down, not like we're used to for one or two weeks, but for a month or more. And how do you navigate that and provide basic services to town? Um, we also participated in the regional emergency coordination. Uh, this is the uh, at the, Sherwood Island State Park, this is the region one, the emergence, regional emergency planning team, uh, which I am a member of. Emergency Management Director for municipalities, a voting member, and that is regional assets. Uh, that are available for us to call on, uh, in the event of an emergency. We also do disaster preparedness. Um, and one of the line items, uh, this is kind of leading you all. One of the line items I have is to update our uh, uh, in particular, our, our shelter supplies. Uh, as you can see, it's some of the stuff that we have located in one of our uh, facilities uh, in town. Uh, is actually from nineteen sixty-three, as you can see on the box there, uh, and it is actually from the nineteen sixties civil defense era. Um, so needless to say, you know, it, it, we haven't had to use it, blessedly, but if we did, uh, we're sorely in need of refreshing some of that stuff. Um, Jim Cole in his tenure did a phenomenal job of getting us into a place where we are now. And I think it's time for us to make that investment to bring us up. So, uh, I will go through the operating request, uh, and I'll just go line by line. So obviously the, the budget year over year is up substantially because emergency management was not a full-time job. Uh, Phil and I were part-time stipend um, in the position. Um, so obviously that, that, that line uh, changes the overall number. Um, I'll start with the top, a bunch of salaries, overtime training. You may be asking, why do we have? Yes.
Can you just make that screen larger? It's kind of tiny and ruined.
Uh, let me see how I could do that. Hold on, stand by one. Let's see if I do, if I do this.
Go down to the bottom right, there you go. Bottom right, there's a slide, there it is, yep. Perfect, thank you, sorry.
No, no worries. I'll have to adjust it again, but um, so salaries OT training. You may be asking, why is there overtime in a, in a group that we're, Phil is a stipend and I'm salaried? Uh, the answer to that is, is that we want to have training overtime to be able to offset or pay for, police and fire to be able to participate as well as EMS, but of course their volunteer. Police and fire to participate in what we would like to establish is a twice a year, multi-department training exercise. Um, it's something that, you know, I, I know police in particular have always wanted to participate in our exercises, but it's difficult hiring people back. Uh, and also it's an expense, right? The OT lines, the chiefs navigate them and they, they manage them exceptionally well, but it's difficult to do. And we don't ever want to be in a position where people are unable to participate cross departments in a training exercise. Uh, because of that. So what in essence we're doing is that would pay for, um, I picked the highest rate of their uh, captain level. Six, six captains for six hours, but it could be split to be ten firefighters or whatever, uh, the chiefs decide. But to just simply have three thousand dollars there that will pay that OT when it's dedicated to that kind of training for mass casualty incidents or disasters. The next line is, I'll go down to service contracts. I'm skipping the HR ones, uh, service contracts. Uh, service contracts includes our Everbridge, which is nine thousand dollars. Uh, Everbridge is our emergency call-out system when we do the phone calls to everybody. It includes fifteen hundred for GIS license. We have three, ARG GIS licenses. Uh, so um, we can use not only the town's GIS system for mapping, power lines down, roads closed, things like that, and then share a layer, share that on a mobile device to our first responders. We haven't had it, we haven't had a chance to use it yet, but it's there, that they can see where all the roads are blocked, but we can also share that information with the public, a different view of it. And most importantly, as we saw in uh, Santa Barbara and in California with the flooding, they're using our GIS, to put on their website their evacuation zones. So a resident can go right to the website, look at the map and see where they need to evacuate due to a flooding. Uh, and or type their address in and know whether they're in the area that's impacted or not, which as you can imagine, heaven forbid, we had a dam failure. Valley Road or one of the larger dams, it would be very difficult for people to know whether they were in the area that potentially was impacted, whereas this tool allows us to do that. Uh, we have the UASC sustainment fee. UASC is the Urban Area Safety Initiative Radio System. Sorry.
Assuming they have electricity.
Assuming they have electricity, yes. And so uh, actually, one of our tabletop, or one of our exercises I, we're planning to do this fall, is exactly that. What happens if we have to do an evacuation for a, a dam emergency? So uh, UASC sustainment fee is, is, uh, we as a region are partners with the uh, uh, Urban Area Safety Initiative Radio. It is a radio system on the state backbone that allows all of us to coordinate with each other. Each municipality got a limited subset of radios. I think PD got four or five, EMS got one, and fire, I think has, how many chief, six, something like that?
Yeah, UASC, yeah.
Yeah, around that. And uh, that is available to us not only to work regionally, to command level individuals, so chief officers. To be able to work together at large scale incidents, but it's also a backup for us. Part of the, that UASC plan and radio system is, if our system goes down, we can leverage our channel as a backup. Um, we have had our system go down. Um, but we didn't have enough radios to really be able to exploit that availability. Anyways, this is, we have a sustainment fee that we're required to pay. Uh, we pay our fair share of it and that's around eight thousand dollars a year. At, at five to eight, they haven't given us the numbers and it varies wildly, so. I booked the high end and we're hoping it'll be on the lower end. Um, that serves contractors, onsite contractors is uh, two things. First is uh, working with Bill Osman, uh, to see if we can get an electrician on call. Uh, a certified electrician on call and have her on a retainer. The reason being is, is that we have a towed portable generator. You may or may not be aware, uh, we have a big four hundred, four hundred or five hundred K tow generator. And in order to hook that up to the plugs that we have at the police department, uh, fire department, Irwin, and other places, in case those generators fail, you need an electrician to do it. It's not something that we have any town employees that are qualified to do. And what we need to do it, we need to do it immediately. Uh, so a retainer there, uh, as well as uh, other emergency on-call services. We're exploring uh, potentially or with our fuel provider for the town. Having actually formalized contract that before a storm, they fill all of our tanks up. They've done it. So thus far, basically because of the, the strong relationship Bill and Tiger have with them. But we wanna actually formalize something so that we know that we have it in place, that we know they're contractually obligated uh, before an emergency occurs. Uh, and actually have it in writing. Uh, the next one, uh, training, uh, training is to bring in outside uh, experts to provide training for us. Um, my hope is, we can find grant money and not have to spend this. Uh, additionally, there is some grant money that is available uh, from the state. Uh, and for, as an example, I'm looking, working right now, uh, to get uh, the state through Bill Ackley to do the tactical emergency casualty care. Course for us, uh, that hopefully will be free because it's state grant money, but we want to have the ability ourselves to bring, true experts in the field to lead our first responder departments in large-scale exercises. Uh, so that's what the training line is. Next one we have is repairs emergency equipment, which is two thousand. Uh, we own, uh, we don't own, the state owns. We are the caretakers for a number of assets that the state of region emergency planning team have uh, stationed in New Canaan. We can use them when we want to use them, but they're also on call whenever the state requests them to be mobilized. They include a, a shelter trailer for people, uh, that has beds and cots and things in it. It includes an animal shelter trailer, which has um, cages and padding and all those sorts of things, and a generator for standing up in animal shelter. We also have variable message, uh, the big orange electronic signs you can put the writing on. Uh, two of those, two out of the four that we have in New Canaan are actually owned by the state. And so we're required to provide maintenance on them. And this money will go to, you know, fixing the repacking wheel bearings, fixing electrical issues, whatever it might be with these items. And actually, the generator on the um, uh, animal shelter trailer, I don't think has been turned over in three or four years. So that's top on my list with these funds to get cleaned up, started and run. Uh, supplies general at seven hundred is just that, pen, paper, things to print the emergency plans, pretty straightforward office supplies. Uh, voice and data is our share of the town voice and data, as well as the cell phones for Phil and I, as we're on call twenty-four seven. Um, uniforms and equipment is uniform and equipment for CERT, uh, predominantly. Uh, you know, I think Phil and I'll maybe end up purchasing one vest out of that, but predominantly, our hope for that funding is for the CERT team to provide them, uh, reflective jackets, raincoats, and the equipment they need, the personal protective equipment they need to operate safely. They provide our town an incredible service. Uh, and they have over the years done all of this through their own fundraising. Uh, and I'm a staunch advocate of, since emergency management has to be the ones to sign off on their mobilization. I'm also a, a firm believer that the town has some, should show some commitment to them, uh, by providing them that PPE for them to operate safely. Uh, and then equipment emergency is uh, emergency. So that's where we want to do a refresh of our self, shelter supplies. Uh, we need to, we would like to purchase some MREs, meals ready to eat, or other rations. I think I'm gonna talk with uh, the chiefs to find out what, what else is out there. Um, but you know, uh, water and charging stations, storage racks to put this equipment. And the hope is, we're working with uh, Tiger and also working with Chief D Federico with the, you know, potential new training facility. Um, to find a home for emergency management and disaster supplies, cause the reality right now is, our equipment is located in the basement of numerous buildings across town and the majority of it uh, in the basement of Saks is inaccessible. Uh, meaning that when it was put there was before Saks was renovated. And since Saks was renovated, you can no longer pull a vehicle up to the door. Uh, so it's buried in the catacombs and we would probably need thirty, forty people to get it out of there if we needed to stand up a shelter. Um, so we're working long-term to find a home. We really should have a place where we can put these, these, these supplies up in our, in racks. And also have the ability to uh, take in emergency supplies if we get uh, supplies from FEMA or from the state. Uh, cause right now we don't have a loading dock per se. And the plan's always kind of thought about using sacks, but, reality is, is now unfortunately with school safety, we are trying to divorce everything we can away from schools. And uh, it also includes some updated uh, monitors and computers for the emergency operations center itself. Uh, in advance of the new police department, uh, so that we can have the appropriate equipment in there. So I'll pause on operating. Any questions? There being none.
The idea was to divorce the, the emergency equipment from the schools. I, I didn't understand that.
Sorry, so what I'm, the majority of our emergency equipment is currently in Saks, which we can't really get to easily. Like literally, we would need forty people in a line to handle, to get it out of where it is currently. But what I meant by that statement was, we don't wanna have as a receiving area. If uh, God forbid, we have a large-scale flood, uh, hurricane disaster where we have a shelter running at the YMCA. And we have forty or fifty or a hundred people in that shelter. At some point, it's, we will receive distributions through points of distribution from the state or from FEMA. Racks, you know, palletized water, palletized food, palletized whatever. Uh, and right now, we don't have a place to receive that. Um, our plans hadn't initially talked about potentially using sacks. Our plans, uh, the problem is, is we don't wanna use a school. The school potentially could be in session and that there's a disaster, but if it could be open, we want it open, right? We want the students to be in school wherever possible. So we're trying to find, the, the reality is, the only other uh, choice we have is the, the highway department. We would have to take over one of their garages for now and potentially for a long duration. Um, so that's why longer term, we're trying to find a, a home for emergency management and our, our town's disaster supplies. Uh, capital requests, I'll go into this uh, in detail. So the first one is the replacement incident command unit. Uh, you may or may not be aware, we already have gone uh, through the board of selectmen for ARPA funds for a significant portion of this. Uh, I think you probably remember last year, I came with uh, talking about our trailer and uh, board of finance asked, um, it was, asked us to go out to bid, but didn't approve the fund, so it kind of stalled for a little bit. Our, our intention here is, is our trailer that we have now is acquired in two thousand seven with grant funds. Um, it's the onsite emergency command post for town officials and coordinators to coordinate emergency and disaster operations. It was used during COVID. Uh, Jen Iselson and the health department team used it as a command center for um, distribution of masks. And they did a, you know, a drive-through distribution site um, in inclement weather. Uh, it also serves as a alternate to the town emergency operations center in case, in the event the police department is inaccessible. Whether it's due to terrorism or a natural disaster or, I mean, I hate to say, back in two thousand one, the uh, the white powder scares, right? It's always a possibility that you could not be able to go to your primary facility, so this would serve as that backup for us. Uh, we would use it at fires, hazardous materials incidents, mass casualty incidents, uh, crime scenes. Um, I hate to say, you know, a lot of the, the, at least the initial start of, of the, the crime scenes investigations and, and work by police has been done within their own squad cars, right? Um, having access to a mobile office, for lack of a better term, to be able to do that, or hostage negotiations in a secured quiet area with communications equipment. Uh, is incredibly valuable. Um, we would use it as a backup EOC. Uh, it has been used, the trailed one, been used at point of distribution for medical. Uh, it would also get used at caffeine carburetors, Fourth of July, major spectator, uh, or mass gatherings. Uh, the FCX of Wavening, which bring over a thousand people in, caroling on the green, uh, things like the holiday stroll and Hal- Halloween walk. Um, you know, in discussion with a, a lot of our, our, our team, the chiefs and, and with the, um, Kevin and others is, it's very important for the town to have a central place coordinating these exercises, right? And heaven forbid something were to occur, that everyone knows where the command center is. So that the, the, the individuals mitigating that situation, police, fire, EMS, public works, uh, EMS, as well as the town, um, officials have a central meeting point and a location to operate. Um, we have agreement from our committee that the trailer is not the right way to go. Uh, the reality is, is the trailer that we had didn't get used very often because, not a lot of people knew how to tow a thirty-five foot trailer. Uh, and those who did were on the highway department predominantly and were not on call twenty-four seven, right? You'd have to call someone in, they'd have to come and get it, and that caused some difficulty. And why it was largely went out for the Fourth of July, but wasn't as leveraged as it could. It needs replacement because the roof is leaf leaking and not repairable, which is leaking now on sensitive radios and equipment. I think they put some tarps on it. I think Ronnie put some tarps. Uh, the body is rotting and rusting. For the town highway service to protect, the roof isn't repairable or worth repairing because of the structure of it. It's just not something you do with the, that type of trailer. And there's a potential injury hazard. Uh, at some point, things like this, which is the entryway steps are going to fail. Uh, just from the rust. Um, the roof itself leaks, cabinets failing due to the water leaks. We, as I said, went to the board of selectmen. I think we're, we're, we're due up for the next groups in the sub, uh, the ARPA subcommittee. Um, why ARPA funds for the, for the first two hundred and fifty of this was, ARPA specifically calls out in the Department of Treasury, uh, funds final rule, that emergency operations centers and response equipment is specifically in the guidance for ARPA funds. Improvements to the construction of emergency operations center. And our last incident command unit was purchased with, for grant funds. And by using our the funds, we leave tax payer dollars for projects that are not ARPA eligible. Um, so we're proposing as a mobile command unit, uh, similar to this one. We've gotta see height-wise if it'll fit, uh, where, where we're looking to put it. Um, three hundred and eighty thousand is the total cost, then that's, it's three fifty, but with, uh, contingency or those additional funds would be used to buy a portable garage where we, where if we can't get it into PD or, uh, elsewhere. So pending approvals, two hundred and fifty would come from the ARPA fund and then we're requesting a hundred and thirty out of our capital request, to finish that project out. Uh, it's gas motors, similar in size to an ambulance, workstations for up to five people. Uh, with radios, cell phones and internet, uh, for command and control. It has a small generator. Uh, we wouldn't be putting computers in it because anybody who's knows computers, uh, if you don't plug them in and use them every five minutes, they download updates forever. So the intention is, everyone has a laptop who's in, you know, gonna be a command officer or gonna be using this. Bring your own device, plug in and go to work. Um, PD and talking with PD and also with the other members of our committee, we, we would like to put a mass mounted surveillance camera on it. Um, the uh, example I use is to where that has benefit in particular is the Fourth of July. Uh, I think every Fourth of July, we have several lost children, uh, and it would be very helpful to have a surveillance tech actually be able to pan through the crowd. Uh, and the cameras are very impressive in what they're able to do. And the cameras are very impressive in what they're able to do. And then a wireless phone, just like the existing trailer has. It's a sample of what it could look like on the inside. The key here is you put the, the people, the leadership from each of the departments that have a role to play. In mitigating an incident or just running a BAU large scale activity in town. Give them that facility to work in and it can also be used by any other department in town and not emergency, right? It's a mobile office, for lack of a better term. So any of the other town departments would be welcome to use it, whether they're out doing inspections or whatever it might be. Pausing on that one. We got bulk fuel trailer in partnership with Public Works. I work with Bill and Tiger. We, we did an inventory of every single generator that the town owns and what facilities they support. And we've identified there's a gap in the ability to refuel these generators, assuming a long duration power outage. We have plenty of fuel storage, especially if we can repurpose the fuel tanks at the high school, the old diesel tanks. But the problem is, is we don't have the ability to move enough of it around to keep all the generators running. Support moving the sewage, keeping the police department running, keeping public safety radios running, all those sorts of things. We got lucky with Sandy, to be honest, because we have about a hundred gallon, my understanding is we have a hundred gallon like. Saddle tank or portable tank that they come out. We did the, I did the math on a spreadsheet and we figured if the whole town was out, a hundred percent out. We would basically be unable on the fourth or fifth day to be able to fuel our assets enough to keep things running. So what we're recommending is the purchase of a one thousand gallon. Department DOT compliant fuel trailer with a fifteen gallon per minute pump. This would go to the highway department, it would be theirs to use and it would be thirty thousand nine ninety-three plus a five hundred dollars, so thirty-one thousand five hundred. For the actual unit itself. It can also get used for other activities. For the highway department in, in, you know, what we call blue sky conditions. However, in an emergency, we just don't have.
I say the number of times the fuel, the diesel pump went down this year and the cost we had to fill up at the local. So that, that's a huge, the huge is for trucks and stuff to have us sit there.
Yeah, and it plays a nice if we can get the tanks at the high school, then that becomes our strategic reserve, right? Then, then we're able to, to, to be able to operate as a government through long duration, right? Like beyond your two weeks, which we've seen the last few storms, but longer than that. When all of the towns, as you may remember from Sandy, all the towns, the companies and individuals are fighting over those scarce resources of fuel or diesel. Well, now we would have the ability to have our own reserve and be able to move it to those critical places we need it. Next on a capital is body armor for EMS and fire. This is something that honestly I hope will stay in a cabinet and never get used. But unfortunately, the reality of the world is every single week you, it's on a weekly cadence now. You hear of an active shooter environment, unfortunately. The fire and EMS, you may be asking, why would they need body armor? The, the training that we have done and what we have practiced too. And I think another exercise we want to run this year with T E C C is. While police is working in the hot zone and neutralizing or basically trapping the individual who's the active, the assailant. EMS and fire, anyone with medical training would be working in what is that warm zone, right? It hasn't been fully secured. It had, the PDs would have their folks dealing with it, but you'd still have people wounded and potentially bleeding. In that area in between the ambulance and wherever they have the hot zone, wherever that person is. And we feel, I feel that at the very least we could do is provide four sets to fire and four sets to EMS. For those who are going to go and are willing to grab those injured, injured people and drag them out. That they should be provided at least that level of safety as opposed to just going in. Because as you can imagine, turnout gear, fire turnout gear and or EMS polo shirts provide you no protection whatsoever. So this would be for eight sets of ballistic armor with plates and helmets to go with it. Like I said, hopefully it would never get used, but if it were to occur, we want to give those people that confidence to be able to operate in that zone. Any comments on that from the chiefs? Are we good? Any questions? Being none, moving on. Next is stop bleed kits. Uncontrolled bleeding is the number one cause of death from trauma. I think the world has, you know, we started off, I think everybody learned how to stop people from choking. Then we, everybody learned how to do CPR and now I think the world, we're trying to push people to understand how to stop hemorrhagic bleeding. It doesn't have to just be an active shooter or, you know, a gunshot wound. It could be something as simple as someone putting their hand through a window and, and having arterial bleeding. These kits would be placed alongside AEDs at every single town building. So you'd have an AED and you'd have stop the bleed kit. A hundred fifty bucks per kit with nice plastic cape. We would get twenty-eight of these kits and they would go across all of the schools. The town hall, fire, police, EMS, public works, Irwin, all of the town buildings. This is something that I brought before the crisis advisory board for these public schools and they unanimously supported it. They thought this was a great project and a great idea.
Particularly helpful with the number of over people on one hundred.
Yes, hundred percent. And the last one is Motorola tri-band radios. We're positing, this is a continuing basically every, every year. To purchase three tri-band radios. The, there's two reasons behind this and these radios are going to go to PD to start because PD. Fire has some tri-band capability. I know Albie just talked about he wishes to increase that so our guys have safety working and neutral aid. We want to start EMS has one of their three ambulances have tri-band and I think they're in a process every year. They're going to start to move over to it. So we want to purchase these for police so that they have that interoperability. We, right now, our police fire EMS and in particular police, because they don't have these tri-bands. Cannot talk on the school radio frequencies. The same thing was talking about earlier with the state being at eight hundred megahertz. Our public schools are on four hundred megahertz and then all of our first responder agencies are on the one fifty-five megahertz. And therefore you can't talk to each other. These radios will allow you to dial, dial in any of those frequencies. The other benefit to this is if down the road, we end up at the point where we want to move to the state radio system. And you know, we're, we're starting the discussions. I just joined the regional, region one communications working group. To start so that I could educate myself better on the benefits and, and, and cons, pros and cons of joining the state system like Stanford, Norwalk and Wilton are doing. But if we were to go down that road, we would need a radio that was capable of talking on that band. These radios can do it. By buying three of them a year, we're bringing down that cost. If we do decide to go to that system. Because these are capable of doing it. We wouldn't have to buy them all in one lump. We can get them phasing in over time. These radios vary from six thousand, nine thousand dollars depending on the configuration and I got to work out with PD as well as the state. The configuration we would want to get. So to answer, you know, Rita, I know your questions about the state system. I have to talk about it. It's not something we're looking to do this year. We're still in, and one of the items that I don't actually have a slide for in our capital is the Motorola software update. That is the third of five year of the contract that we have with Motorola. And that is our, for our public safety radios, police fire EMS, public works. That is the contract that gives us twenty-four hour support. And also gives us proactive upgrades of the software when it reaches end of life. And also a replacement of the hardware when it reaches end of life. The system is all did is, you know, it's digital now. So it's software based and uses switches and internet. So that is our third of five years we're committed, we have to pay it. But when we come to the end of that fifth year, there's a very good question of, you know, would we save money? Or would that cost of that agreement be less if we were to partner with the state? Given the fact that we would have a very substantial capital expenditure to, to move to that eight hundred system. So I don't have enough info on it yet. I just wanted to put it out there. That is something we are researching this year to get a very good understanding. In advance of this contract expiring. And that's what I have.
In lieu of the, you have that, that conversation about the public meeting where people were talking about. You know, along with the cell tower conversation, they were saying, are we looking at the most up to date sort of technology that we should be? Or, you know, communication, if we do think that, you know. Cell service isn't what it should be. Are we, you know, using the most current technology we should be. Having looked into some of the, I think some of the things at the attention of the meeting, I'd love to know, and I think you, I think you have done this. Since that meeting, I would love to just get your opinion on some of those thoughts that were expressed during the meeting. About the, you know, maybe the technology that we're using or, you know, other equipment out there that we might be, or we should be considering.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, I looked at putting in this budget request, getting Starlink, which is Elon Musk's satellite, you know. We have a significant canopy here, the tree cover. And you know, I, I have not played with Starlink myself, so I cannot speak to its efficacy in town. I can just say from my experience having used satellite phones in the military, they worked great when we were in Iraq in the desert. They did not work so well when we were in the trees. You had to find a clearing to get them to work. The, the cellular, I, I think of the cellular and our public safety radios, two separate discussions. We have had a number of discussions between the chiefs as to, and I think even Stuart Southbeatty, when they originally redid our radio system and upgraded us with that. Project, I guess it was five, six years ago when it was done. Whether we should, you know, would we be in a place ten years from now? Where we could just ditch all of our stuff and go entirely off of cellular. And I think the feeling remains the same and I'll encourage the chiefs to speak up as well, that you don't want to be relying on a commercial provider. For public safety. I'll give you a very clear example during Hurricane Sandy, when I was working in the EOC with Mike Handler and Jack Hennessy. On a whim, I jumped, jumped in my car and drove up to the water tanks at Waveninga to take a look at the tank for the generator there. Because our radios share the same generator that AT&amp;T and Verizon and all them. It's all one generator. You know, I got in through the fence, opened it up and it was completely empty one day before Sandy arrived. And it was just because they weren't monitoring it and apparently this, the fuel level indicator failed. So there, there is an expense to us maintaining our own equipment. But the flip side is it means we have control over things that are absolutely critical to us in navigating emergencies.
So what are you referring to in that case? You say relying on, I wasn't thinking I would be relying on, on a commercial. Are you saying because AT&amp;T and FirstNet, is that the, that the assumption? I'm not sure. Why would we?
So I might have misunderstood because I, I thought, sorry, my brain is in budget. So I was thinking this was related to public safety radio. Are you talking about something different than the public safety radios?
I was just talking about some of the suggestions that people had in a public meeting that we, where we were discussing the cell tower. And, you know, so it was identified that it's a public, it's a public safety issue. In fact, we don't have like the appropriate cell coverage and I wanted to have that. So it's hard to be able to adequately, you know, respond and, and. And all that. And some of the folks in the audience had suggested other alternatives to using. Cell service and, and that's why, that's what I was asking about.
But I think we do a good job of that currently. And I think any emergency service has redundancies and layers. We rely on the two-way radio system, which we revamped and we went to a simulcast system before we were just dispatching. And using the antennas that are waving water tower, but now we have antennas throughout town that dispatch and transmit. We also rely on cell service, cell coverage for our mobile devices, our mobile computers, mobile data terminals. And also just regular communications. When we go to a scene, we want to be able to talk back to dispatch. Things that we may not want to put out publicly over our radio system, sensitive information, critical information. Or not critical information, that we just need to have a proof of information. That's why. Cell service is very important to us to utilize on the ground at, at scenes, but also for the public to call us when they need us.
Yeah, that I understand.
What we're saying is there's multiple layers to it. As I said, you know, we did look at satellite cell phones, satellite phones and, you know, those have. Limitations, just like anything else. So, you know, I think we constantly are evaluating our systems to see if we are up to date, if there's anything better. But just because newer doesn't mean that it's better either. We need, we need reliability first and foremost. And, 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 you know, I think we're doing that methodically. We don't just grab the latest and greatest thing. You know, on the micro cells or the cell count, you know, so we need to just go into those things thoughtfully. And I think we, we do that because we all work collectively together and we evaluate our systems and is there a better way to do that? And that's why you see that large price tag for the Motorola system and that, that was part of the cost of reevaluating our system. And when we did that, we looked at going to that eight hundred frequency. And it wasn't at the time benefits to doing that because it's multiple millions of dollars to upgrade all of our infrastructure. Be able to broadcast on that network. And we didn't see a lot of advantage to doing that. So to answer your question, we, we do constantly reevaluate. The technology that's out there, the systems that are out there and look at ways to improve it. But also adding redundancy and is there any other way that we can accomplish that goal of being able to have. Reliable, dependable, secure communications, not only amongst yourself, but amongst other agencies. So, you know, I, I think we are doing that and right now. I, I think we have the best that's out there for the cost that we'll run to accept.
All right. Other questions? Call my thing for Russ.
You know, Russ, i- in an ideal world, is there anything that you haven't asked for that you think would really benefit the town? By either using ARPA funds or, you know, some windfall comes. Is there anything that you haven't asked for?
Well, I mean, the biggest thing is, is that, I mean, I would say that we should use the ARPA funds to fully fund the incident command vehicle. Because it is clearly, clearly by the, the rules and guidelines of ARPA, that's what it's for. I think the biggest thing that I, that keeps me up at night is what I mentioned before, which is our supplies, our equipment. Which it was great that Jim and Cole and others have acquired all of it. It's all over the place. And when I, you know, when I asked, where can we start to put this equipment, the only other alternative I got was the second floor of Irwin. And Irwin doesn't have a loading dock and that means bringing it up the little spiral staircase. And it's, you know, when we had, people don't think that it's a substantial, but when the pandemic hit. We ended up receiving from the points of distribution that box upon boxes upon boxes of masks and gloves and equipment. That we distributed to the schools, to nursing homes, to everyone else. That's, that's a pandemic. If you have a hurricane, a, a, a dam break, a flood, whatever, it's not going to be masks, it's going to be food, it's going to be water. The things that, you know, individuals will need to survive because we very well may end up being an island for a while before roads are cleared and we're able to operate. So we should have some level of stores in an accessible location and that becomes a bigger. I've had the conversation come and it's a difficult one because where do you go? Because the highway department is really full of stuff and there really isn't a place to put a structure there. Schools is difficult because where would you put it at the schools? We couldn't exactly build a garage on Irwin. I don't think that would go over well with the public. So it does come down to that. That's the thing that keeps me awake and I didn't put anything in the budget because I don't have an, excuse me, an answer yet. Because I've had conversations with Tiger and everyone else and I haven't, there hasn't been a good. For a town of fifty-two properties, so we can't find a place to keep our emergency equipment. Your own barn would be great. The problem is the Irwin barn is, it's in bad shape. Like you go in there and you can't walk in the floors.
Share to get the roof fixed. So once you fix the roof, you've got that whole floor.
Yeah, and I, you know, I can't speak to it because I gotta, it, it's a question for Tiger and them and their strategic plan as to what they intend. But it would, it would work great because you can back a truck up to it and as long as it doesn't leak and it doesn't have mold, then that, that works, right? I, I guess the, the advantage of the basement of Saks way deep in the catacombs by, I guess where the old shooting range is, is it's cool and dry. You just can't get anything out of there.
What about the new police building that's being designed? Wouldn't that be a logical place to keep it?
I'll defer to Chief D Federico on that.
No room, no vacancy.
Yeah, however, if PD, if PD does get a training facility, I would think that's an ideal time to put a small garage next to it, right? If they do end up, that, that proceeds. And I've been positing that that training facility is a joint facility, right? Fire can use it. I think that's, that's, that's the beauty of that. And then we could put those supplies there and that works for everybody.
Thanks, Ross. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for participating.
Thank you. Thanks.